Good evening. I would like to welcome you to the June 4, 2024 School Board Regular Meeting. The time is now 6:00 PM. The School Board would like to take a moment to respectfully acknowledge that we reside on the traditional lands of the Denai people. Our mission is to provide an excellent and equitable education in a safe supportive environment so that all students will succeed and contribute to a diverse and changing society. Ms. Marotti, would you please lead us in the pledge? Ms. Pollan, could you please call the roll?
Certainly. Colonel Alvarado?
Here.
Mr. Burgess?
Here.
Mrs. Burnett?
Here.
Mr. Doran?
Here.
Ms. Maple?
Here.
Ms. Marotti?
Here.
Mrs. Sanderson?
Here.
Mrs. Hardy?
Here.
The board has a quorum.
The next item on our agenda is the recognition of Colonel Antonio Alvarado, Commander of the 354th Mission Support Group C, Isles and Air Force Base. He will be recognized for his service to the board, and I will make the presentation. Do you want to come up here, Colonel Alvarado? Or do you want to? It is an honor to recognize Colonel Alvarado, affectionately known as Pumba, for his two years of dedicated service to the Fairbanks North Star Borough School Board as the Isles and Air Force Base representative. Colonel Alvarado joined the board in August of 2022. And at his, or in only his second meeting, in response to a vote on a resolution, he told our community that acceptance, respect, dignity, and recognition of everyone's identity are consistent with the standards of the DOD. And that his advisory votes on this board would reflect those standards. At that time, I was not yet a member of this board, just a community member and a military spouse. Sitting in the audience that night, listening to a military representative speak in favor of inclusivity and in the inherent dignity of those who serve in our armed forces, made me both hopeful and very proud. Throughout his board service, Colonel Alvarado has taken his role very seriously, often staying until the wee hours of the night during some meetings, and never failing to provide a thoughtful, DOD-focused perspective when it was warranted. His perspective, wisdom, and friendship have made me a better board member and a better person. While I am sad to see him leave our board, I am glad to know that he will continue to live in our community and make Fairbanks a better place, hopefully long after his retirement from the Air Force. Thank you for your service and for your friendship.
And the board would like to, this is called a Purple Heart Plant. So, we got that for you. At this time, are there board members who would like to make comments? Ms. Burnett?
Thank you. Colonel Alvarado, when I first opened the agenda and saw this recognition, I sat for a really long time, had a wave of emotion flood over me. I truly thought that I'd get to have your guidance and advice my whole term. That's not the case, and now I must say so long, and I refuse to say goodbye. Our students in our district are so fortunate to have had your service on this board. Your thoughtfulness and your true, honest, and diverse advice always sat with me. When talking school closures in Ben Isles, and I reached out to you to discuss my thoughts and frustrations, and you were calm and you were real. I was not calm. You handled that well, and to handle me is a pretty big feat. A true, honest conversation is what helped and guided me through that with this budget process and how to handle closing a school that we knew would be hard to do so. Thank you, Pumba, for your time, your dedication, and for choosing Alaska as your home. I say so long because the chances I'll see you at Freddy's or somewhere in town, they're pretty good. I'm proud to call you friend. Thank you for your service, and I really will miss you.
Ms. Maple?
Our overlap has been very brief. But my, I wanted to speak to something that happened before I got on the board. On September 2 last year, a really crappy blog post went out that was an attack on me and my family. And a few days later was a school board meeting where you guys discussed the resolution to recognize LGBTQ History Month. And I was traveling for work and listening to all of this from afar. And not yet on the school board, but very invested, and I listened to a lot of hurtful things be said. And then it came to you, and I didn't know you. And you, I went and listened to it again last night. You said a lot of things, but the things that sat with me the most that night when I needed it, and I know that many other people in our community needed it, were you said, "We're just trying to do better," and that we, military, meaning the military, exist to make sure people have the right to choose their own life. And so clearly, from President Hardy's words, that's been a guiding principle in your service to this board, and I am so grateful for it. And I know that I'm not alone in especially hearing that that evening in September of last year. So, thank you.
Mr. Doran?
Yes, sharing in the thanks for your service, not only to our country, but our community, and specifically to our school board. I've appreciated your thoughts and your comments and how you have expressed yourself. I am thrilled that it's retirement and it's a celebration. And so knowing how retirement is a great opportunity for new journeys, we look forward to that. And I'm very, also very glad that you will be staying as part of our community and contributing to our community in different ways. So, thank you for everything you've done.
It's not awkward yet.
Mr. Burgess?
Yeah, I just, you know, being a relatively new board member, I didn't get to know you half as well as I would have liked to. And that's on me. But I really share the sentiments of my fellow board members here in that when I heard you speak, I heard you speak for all people, for this whole community. And the advice that you gave was really, it was poignant every time I heard you speak. This was before I was on the board too, because I've been watching for a long time. And I really do appreciate all that you bring, both in terms of your dedication to this country and to the community, and the stalwart strength that you have shown on this board. So, I really, yeah, I didn't prepare anything. You can tell I'm kind of rambling. But I really have appreciated your service on this board. And I am sad to see you go, but happy for your retirement. So, thank you.
Ms. Marotti?
I'm not going to look at you because I'll cry. So, the Air Force motto, do you know it?
Fly, Fight, and Win.
Right, AMI, Fly, Fight, Win. You are a fly boy, so you get that first part. You fought for our students. And we all win from spending time in your presence. As a veteran, I am so proud to call you a colleague and a friend. And I look forward to your family's next adventure here in Fairbanks. You've healed my perception of military leadership by being who you are. And I cannot thank you enough.
Ms. Anderson?
Well, Colonel, I just want to thank you for your service to the board and all that you've contributed. And from one veteran spouse to another, we're going to be really blessed to have you be a part of our community and continue to find leadership roles and giving back to the community. So, I want to thank you for the standard that you set and the integrity in which you walked out in your walk. Thank you so very much.
The mic is yours.
Okay. Wow, thank you. It's on now. Okay, so I actually prepared notes because, for a couple of reasons. First, I wanted to, when you're off talking, I want to make sure all points are pointed and not left unpointed. And I kind of use a script as kind of like the barn doors to keep my intellectual livestock from getting out and getting into people's lawns and stuff like that. So, I'm going to try to keep us on track, and I apologize. But again, thank you for the very kind words. So, with that said, it is an absolute pleasure to be in front of you one more time for the last time. Unfortunately, this is going to be it for me. However, I got to tell you right now, two years later, never in my wildest dreams did I ever imagine that I was going to ever serve on a school board. Anybody that knows me knows I was the kid that really didn't appreciate school very much, and I was an extremely selectively motivated student. So, the fact that I did this is amazing. The fact that I loved it is a testament to what I've got to feel in the, in the community of Fairbanks, as well as serving with, with the school board. So, to say I've learned a lot is an absolute understatement. It has been an education, and that terrible pun was absolutely intended. So, if you don't mind, I'd like to offer a couple of thoughts from an Isles and Air Force Base representative perspective, and then some personal thoughts from me as I get ready to disembark. So, as a member of Isles and Air Force Base, I can't thank you all enough for the time, dedication, and partnership I've seen from all of you. It goes without saying that the past few years have been fraught. It's been very tumultuous regarding the state's education climate. And everybody has felt it, and we've felt it in Isles and Air Force Base. The reality is two of our three schools have been closed in the past three or four years. This has been difficult, and it's come at a high cost from a mission and personal perspective. But this is just, this is not just a military thing. We know decisions have to be made, and although I can certainly say, Dr. Minor, that we hope ACES does not become a discussion or a decision in the future, we know these things have to happen. But regardless, no matter what happens from an Isles and Air Force Base perspective, we remain committed to our continued partnership. We look forward to continually seeking education quality improvement, not just for military kids, but for all kids. I can't imagine what Alaska's going to look like in 15 years, but I can't imagine that it's going to be anything less than sensational. Just watching the growth in the short time I've been here and to see the commitment by all the folks that I get to meet on a daily basis, this lets me know that this is a community that's going to grow, be amazing. And we at Isles and Air Force Base looking forward to being part of that collaborative growth with this community. Back in the day, not too long ago, communities actually on base developed on their own, regardless of what was happening outside the base gates. And thankfully, that's changed, and that needs to change. And I'm a really kind of hokey cheesy person. And the fact is, I love the fact, knowing that somewhere in the state, Delaware, Kentucky, Nevada, you name the state, there's some young man or woman growing up right now thinking about serving our country, thinking, we're going to probably sign some papers, leave their awesome community, and with the military, come to this fantastic community to see just another great part of the world. And I'm so happy that we get to do that, you know, whether you're in the Army or you're in the Air Force. So, from an Isles and perspective, it has been absolutely amazing, and we look forward to years and continued deliberate growth with you all. It has been amazing. Thank you from an Isles and perspective. Shifting gears now, words from Warthog, Pumba. This is Tony talking here. A few thank yous that I really, really, really would like to get across. So personally, all of you folks here and all you folks online, I want to thank you. Everyone who participates and works for the school board, whether you write in or you testify, whether people agree with it or not, the fact of the matter is you guys are extremely clear that you are dedicated to working to make this community better and our future generations better. There is no doubt in my mind, that is what it's all about. You all, when I look at your faces and I see you, whether I'm at Walmart or whether I'm here or whether I'm, wherever I'm at, hopefully Freddy's, you guys represent the most devout and dedicated of communities. And it was such a pleasure to watch you work, to be around you, and to hear your thoughts. I love the passion. As somebody who thought I would die my last breath without ever breathing Alaskan air, you guys are absolutely amazing. So, thank you for your dedication and passion, and keep at it. Now, I'd also like to offer a heartfelt thank you to my fellow board members. I've had the unique privilege of seeing what a lot of other community members don't see. From very candid and pointed discussions with Dr. Minor, the pleasure was mine, sir, to intense phone calls with several of my fellow board members, I assert you guys don't get paid enough. And you guys, what you're doing is truly a labor of love. I've been fortunate to see some of you through your very best and some of your worst moments. And I got to tell you, I've been really impressed, you know, how some of you have handled yourselves impeccably, even when you've been attacked by those who lost track of civility as they were trying to do the right thing on the betterment of the community. Please, continue to set the example of class and decorum, and even when it was not extended to you. I urge you to stay the course, and I say with the deepest admiration, I applaud your grace as you continue charting a way for our future. Another shout out, he's not here, so I shouldn't even talk about him, but I will. I think you got to be present to win personally. So, another shout out, Colonels Cole and Colonel Suri. For those of you that don't know, things will always going to be a little bit contentious between the Army and the Air Force because we had a little itty bitty spat, you know, that resulted in a service divorce, creative differences back in 1947. In spite of that, I'm proud to have served with two amazing professionals that feel as I do, that America is worth every bit of our effort and dedication. I've learned from both of them tremendously, and it makes me so happy to know that the men and women across our country are dedicating themselves to the defense of our nation. But I take particular comfort as American in knowing that we are truly safe as long as the Army keeps rolling along. Finally, they're not here, so I shouldn't even talk about them, but I will anyway. Finally, our institutional heroes, our installation heroes, and our unsung heroes, Kay and Janet, our school liaison officers. Their tireless work and dedication is something few understand or frankly fathom. While Colonel Cole and I do our very, very best to advocate for our military communities, those two make sure we are poised and ready to not only not embarrass ourselves, but be helpful to the board and helpful to the community. While we can say thank you all day long, those words do not really clearly effectively convey the depth of the appreciation that they do for us so we can help them, so we can help, again, a great American community. So finally, in closing, we're finishing, folks. We're bringing the livestock back in. So in closing, I have been humbled and honored to be part of this board. You embraced me and opened your hearts and minds to my thoughts, and I can't thank you all enough. I ask that you embrace Colonel Foster, just as you did me, but I also ask you continue to advocate for all students, regardless of demographic. We know all students matter, and let's stay focused on that. I will forever treasure this opportunity and look forward to seeing you all around as I aimlessly bounce around Fairbanks unemployed after one January. So with that, thank you all very much. Thank you, thank you, and thank you all. Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Consent agenda items marked with an asterisk are considered routine and not requiring public discussion by the school board. Unless removed from the consent agenda, asterisk items will be automatically approved when the agenda is adopted. Questions concerning these items should be directed to the administration before the meeting. May I have a motion?
Move to adopt the agenda with consent items.
Second.
Ms. Pollan, would you please call the vote?
Colonel Alvarado?
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett?
Yes.
Ms. Maple?
Yes.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Mrs. Sanderson?
Yes.
Ms. Marotti?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Mrs. Hardy?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Next item on our agenda is public comments on report and non-agenda items. During this section of the agenda, the school board welcomes public comments on non-agenda topics. This time is an opportunity for community members to be heard. The board will make note of topics, though no official action will be taken. Topics may be referred to the administration for further research and future potential action. Board members will not be responding to comments or questions made by the public, but may ask questions of the speaker for clarifying purposes only. Concerned citizens should initially discuss matters with the superintendent or designee first. After the superintendent or designee has heard these concerns, then it may be brought to the board. Individual students and district personnel may not be discussed in public testimony. Please contact the district office to route concerns about individual students or district personnel through the appropriate channels. Members of the public will be given the opportunity to speak on agenda items at the time the item is introduced for action and or discussion. Once the agenda is published, testifiers should email or call the school board office by 4:00 PM the day of the meeting to sign up for public testimony. Those who have signed up in advance will be called upon first. And if time remains, anyone else in person will be invited to testify until the one-hour time limit has been reached. Public testimony will be heard from citizens in the order in which they have signed up. A sign-up sheet is available in the boardroom prior to the start of the meeting for those who have not already signed up in advance. Speakers are limited to three minutes each, and should provide their first name, spell their last name, and state their area of residence. Our first pre-signed up testimony is Ms. Danielle Logan. Could you turn the mic? Oh, okay. Just one second, it's not, try now.
Hello?
Okay. Thank you for President Hardy. For the record, my name is Danielle Logan, and I live in Fairbanks. L-O-G-A-N. As I get ready to close out my term as the, as a president, I wanted to say thank you. Thank you for the work you do. I know it's not easy. I've learned more than I've ever wanted in three years of watching school board meetings, conversations with board members, and budget presentations. Side note, Ms. Marotti, I still don't like budgets, but I have a better understanding. Thank you for including Esa at the table during the budget work sessions. We may not always agree on something, but at least those hard conversations are, can be had, and they are needed. As we are well aware, we will be in a deficit situation next year. This is a reminder that outsourcing costs more and achieves less. Our schools don't function without our support staff, and that includes custodial. Lastly, I would like to send a big thank you to all Esa members. Y'all are amazing. Thank you for these three years. April Johnson from Nutrition Service is our incoming president. Will be taking the reins in July, and I know she will do a fantastic job. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we have Ms. Gail McBride.
My name is Gail McBride, M-C-B-R-I-D-E, and I live in Fairbanks. And as you can see, I'm with Moms for Liberty. I have commented several times on my alarm after finding the sexually explicit material in our school libraries. I chose a book to go through the process to challenge it, "The Bluest Eye." Spoke with West Valley's principal about it. He thought he had no influence on what books the district approves, but said when he was an English teacher, he taught this book and had students write book reports on it. I then had a meeting with Assistant Superintendent Gillen, Gillum, and Mr. Bream. The conclusion was that we will pursue policy change because our concern is a fundamental difference in the purpose of education. My goal will be that material offered will be kind of like a doctor, do no harm. Sexually explicit material is damaging in many ways, especially to young forming brains. The district will have opportunity during this time to make the case to parents and taxpayers that this material is beneficial to our youth. We will continue to inform parents and community members. We will continue to inform parents and community members of each book containing explicitly sexual material, hard drug use, and any other damaging material that is exposed. From "The Bluest Eye," the little girls are the only things I'll miss. Do you know that when I touched their sturdy little tits and bit them just a little, I felt I was being friendly? I didn't want to kiss their mouths or sleep in the bed with them or take a child bride for my own. Playful, I felt, and friendly. Two of them, Doreen and Sugar Babe, they'd come together. I gave them mints, money, and they'd eat ice cream with their legs open while I played with them. It was a party, and there wasn't nastiness, and there wasn't any filth, and there wasn't any odor, and there wasn't any groaning. Just the light white laughter of little girls and me. And there wasn't any look, any long funny look, any long funny Velma look afterward. There's more, of course, and I am not happy. I am disturbed, very troubled to have read this. I've been disturbed to read it myself, but to read it publicly is troubling. And I'm sorry. But more than that, I'm sorry that our children are exposed to this. This is only one, and this was called a classic. Apparently, we need a different definition.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Ms. Ruth Ewig. Okay. Our next speaker then is Ms. Cynthia Wozniak.
Hi, my name's Cynthia Wozniak, W-O-Z, and I, A.K., 41-year Fairbanks resident. And I too have some of that book I wanted to share. I really don't want to share. I'm, it's, it's so sad that it's even a thing and that it's before us and especially before our children. And I'm, my motive here for sharing this content is to alert people that may not know about it and know that it's even going through our schools across the U.S. and Fairbanks. It's here on our home front. And we just need to alert, and more than alert, get active in. I think we need to stop what we're doing right now, get in our vehicles, and go to every school and pull these books, is what I think. And I just can't believe that it's here. It's that we're even addressing it among all the other vile, evil, perverse stuff going on. Here's another, before I read some of that, that off of Gail's, this is what's, I got alerted to that porn books are in the Fairbanks Public School Libraries. Some of the sexual, sexually explicit books are West Valley, Crank, Damsel, Fallout, Flamer, Fun Home, Glass, Perfectly Normal, Weller Elementary, and Tango Makes Three, Pink is for Boys, Drama, and Ween, My Princess Boy, Pink is for Boys, Red, Be Who You Are, Morris, Mickelwhite and the Tangerine Dress, and the Deep Dark Blue. The required reading list for public schools 11th and 12th grade literature students includes out of approximately 119 books, 26 Anti-White, 11 Anti-Christian, 14 Sexually Explicit, 26 Anti-American, 8 Anti-Men, and Entire Homosexual Section. I don't want this in my grandchildren's path or any of the kids. Do you? I mean, something needs to be done about this. They need to be pulled immediately yesterday. I hope you all agree. Here's some of, some more of what Gail was reading from "The Bluest Eye." As much as I really don't care to read it, but people need to wake up. They need to see this and know this and know that it's in our kids' paths every day.
Thank you, I'm sorry that's time. Our next person is Summer McMillan.
Hi, thank you all for having me here today. My name is Summer McMillan, M-C-M-I-L-L-A-N, and I reside in Two Rivers. I am the president of the Timber Wolf Pact. We are a nonprofit organization that advocates for education for the children in Two Rivers Pleasant Valley. I'm gonna read our mission statement very quickly. Our mission statement says, "The Timber Wolf Pact is a nonprofit organization whose purpose is to promote and strengthen education within the Two Rivers Pleasant Valley community." Now, we have in the last couple of days reached out to our community in Two Rivers and Pleasant Valley. We put out a survey, a community outreach survey, and it was asking generic questions on how we can help our students in our area better. Some of these answers that we got on the survey are quite interesting. Parents are very opinionated. So, one of the questions was, "If you homeschool your children, why do you choose to?" And then we asked, "Can you explain in detail your answers?" Some of the answers say, "My son attends Two Rivers Elementary School since kindergarten. He'll be going to sixth grade, and they're talking about the school shutting down. It's so frustrating, I'm not sure if I should sell my home or stay. Everything is up in the air always is so stressful." Another comment was liberal teachers, liberal board members. "The curriculum they push, so many not saying the National Anthem, all of the alphabet people nonsense, no real history, no real science, just sit and learn and be compliant." "I am absolutely unhappy with the social, emotional LGBTQ agenda teaching our kids that they can be whatever sex they want is wrong. Teaching improper use of pronouns is wrong. Why is it that the majority of girls at Two Rivers want to be boys? Who is teaching and we're encouraging them to do this? It is not normal adolescent behavior. There are over 6,000 differences between the male and female body. Why don't you teach real science?" "Do you think Two Rivers should close?" was another question that was asked. "Would you like to elaborate on why Two Rivers should or shouldn't close?" This was overwhelming. 90% of the people, now, I'm, keep in mind, these are preliminary survey results. Our survey has only been out for a few days. I printed these last night. So, elaborate on why Two Rivers should or should not close. I think the reason the school is closing, these are answers from our community, is a little vague and ridiculous. I feel the Borough School District has become very corrupt with its money spending, the admin world, and they need to put their money elsewhere instead of pockets for their admins. Children should educate close to their home community where people care for them as neighbors and friends. I heard the timer."
I know, we do have a question for you, though. Ms. Marotti?
Thank you, Ms. McMillan. You started to say, but I missed the end of it, that 90% of the people surveyed, what was the rest of it?
Said the school should not close.
Should not, okay, thank you.
I'm not seeing any other further questions. Oh, sorry, Mr. Doran.
A quick one, when you get the survey results, could you share that with the board?
Oh, absolutely, I would be more than happy to email them to you. Like I said, these were just preliminary. Our survey's only been out for a couple of days, but I just wanted to let you know that so far, these are some of the thoughts that we've, we've gathered. So, anything else?
Thank you, and thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Timothy Poindexter. I remembered.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Tim Poindexter, P-O-I-N-D-E-X-T-E-R. Now, I've got a few key points I would like to bring up, and then I'm gonna get off my little speech that somebody wrote for me and get to make a few focus group recommendations. The Timber Wolf Pact representing Two Rivers, imagine this, in five years, maybe 10, the Fairbanks North Star Borough School District will be in a continuous fight with the state for funding. You've seen this coming for a while now. School populations have been declining at a drastic rate for too long. You're surprised it's held out for long. Fairbanks only hold 25,000 people now, mostly military. There's still a few sourdough here, including myself, but their kids left not too long ago. Now, that's about all I really want to say from the speech. Now, I want to talk about the focus group that I attended for the military at North Pole High. Well, I was there with the wing commander's wife from the Air Force at Ileson and several other young ladies. And we discussed mainly our hour and a half, our 45-minute meeting went for an hour and a half on communication. And communication was probably the most important thing that we discussed the whole time. Communicating from y'all, communicating from the budget. There was one ex-school board member up on the, the folks group, and she gave me a lot of insight. And I hope some of the insight that I received was not accurate. She said that no matter what we do at Two Rivers, they're still gonna close it next year. And I'm hoping I'm not going to all this trouble talking to y'all and making all these fundraisers and sitting up here with all the high and mighty and hoping that we can change this, and we can't. But they said Ileson Air Force Base was operated in the black and they closed. We're in the red, and we're, we're on the next chopping block. Is that what's gonna happen? I hope not. I'm trying our hardest with the rest of our group, the president, vice president, myself, the treasurer, and our secretary, Air Force, Army members, and we are working so hard to keep the school going. And we hope that we get communication from y'all, and we will be giving you our surveys and any information that we receive in the future. And I know that you're hardworking individuals, both in your regular day jobs and being on members of the school board. And I hope that y'all will work with us any way you can see fit because we are a very rural Title I school. And we don't want our kids to be beeped. Yes, I, I hope that this will convey a little bit of my thoughts.
I'm not seeing any questions. Thank you so much for your testimony. Next, we have Nicholas McMillan.
Hello, I'm Nicholas McMillan, M-C-M-I-L-L-A-N, from Two Rivers. Mostly, I just came to y'all with a couple of questions I hope y'all can answer. And I have been and stuff to hopefully write down answers and stuff. Mostly, I want to get feedback from the board, and it seems like every time we try and talk, try and get answers, it seems like running into a wall. And I want to give y'all an opportunity to set the record straight on some of them. I'll just rattle them all off, and if y'all want to write down which ones y'all think y'all can answer and answer back, that'd be great, greatly appreciated. So, one is, we get a lot of questions about what we actually would have to do, would have to achieve to keep the school open. One of the things I've heard is 100% personally, like 100% enrollment. That personally just does not sound like a feasible statement for any school to maintain 100% or even definitively get 100% in the first place, especially on short notice. And when y'all are talking about closing the school, so, like, it comes up so often that no one's gonna want to enroll in a closing school anyway, so that seems impossible. So, what, what would be a way we could try and keep that from happening? If it's possible at all? Cooperation for, if we could, if we have any way of cooperating for, funding seems like the biggest issue for it. If through donations or something, if that's even a thing we can do legally or something like that to help solve some of the issues. And also, if there's a location, we can see funding specifics, like, not general, but like more specifics as far as, I don't know what y'all can provide. And also, I know there's certain stuff y'all can't, like specifics as far as individual schools, but if y'all have like any kind of oversight on what they spend, though, or any way we can know that there is oversight to make sure that there's no frugal, like, you know, ridiculous spending there. I mean, basically, can we save the school? And that being said, and this one thing is, for me, military, I'm sure you know the thing, sorry, is, for answering this question, maintaining integrity and moral courage, what's some of the things you think we should know, our Two Rivers community, that you think you can tell us that maybe we haven't, haven't heard, haven't thought of yet? That's all for me.
Ms. Marotti?
Thank you for those questions. I know that you're probably aware that we can't answer from the dais during this time, but have you emailed them to the board? That's typically the best way to get responses to direct questions.
Usually, when we get questions to the board, stuff like that, it's been very generic responses. It don't seem to, it seems almost like a non-answer, almost. We get stuff that answers back that seem very generic, like they, like there's only so much y'all can say. And that's, that's been a difficulty.
So, if I look up your name, I'll be able to find that email? That way I can see what the...
My wife, more specifically.
Okay, I'll do that, thank you.
I just have one more. Have you spoken with Principal Wilde about some of those questions? I did go out for two hours before the end of the year and had a long conversation with her.
Well, me specifically, I have not. I've been, military's kept me very busy over the past couple of months. But I know my wife has talked to her on multiple occasions. And that's a, it's gotten more touchy over time. You know, tensions have gotten a little bit more strained, but we're working on it.
And just for informational purposes, all of our phone numbers, or most of ours, are available on our website, and that's another way to reach out directly to a board member. And I know many of us will pick up the phone and have those conversations, or you can arrange through email to have meetings. We can't answer right now, I'm sorry.
Yep.
All right, thank you for your testimony. The last person we have signed up for tonight is Mr. Rich Ide.
Yeah, my name is Richard Ide, E-I-D-E, and I am from North Pole. And I wanted to talk about, very briefly, about inclusivity and diversity. It is throughout our booklets and literature and online. It's everywhere. It's a philosophy more than an actual practice, however, because it is, it is not true that we're inclusive of traditional family value parents and citizens like myself. I identify with that. For example, in our books, we know there's a lot of books that I could embarrass some people if I read portions of them during conferences with parents. Parents, teachers are not supposed to say a lot of things to parents that Mary is doing in school, the name she wants to be called, the pronouns and that. And that's dishonest, it's dishonesty with parents. And like a counselor handing out pee flakes on the last day of school to students. That's not okay. And, you know, conservatives like myself are considered hard-hearted and stiff-necked. And actually, we've been the one that have been giving in and compromising. For the last seven years, I've been involved in local politics. I've been watching this, and now we have the most progressive, woke school board we've ever had. And this is just gonna get blown off. There's gonna be no change... There's gonna be no change in policies, but I wish there would. I wish we could be truly diverse and have conservative thought be part of the whole system, and it's unlikely. I'm done.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
That concludes who we have pre-signed up. If there is anyone in the audience that would like to provide testimony on non-agenda items, now would be your opportunity. If you've already spoken, you don't, it's not the assembly. We only get one turn. I'm sorry. Is there anyone else before I close public testimony? Seeing none, public testimony is now closed. Our next item on the agenda is our Borough Assembly Report. Presiding Officer Savannah Fletcher, Borough Assembly member, will provide the Assembly Report.
Good evening, School Board. Savannah Fletcher here, as Mrs. Hardy said, Presiding Officer of the Borough Assembly. Colonel Alvarado, I want to extend my appreciation for your service as well, both at this dais and in the community and for our country. Just some quick updates for us. I know you guys have a lot on your plate tonight. We finished budget! Yay! I know you have more meetings on it. I'm sure you've all been following, but in case folks are listening, we were at $54 million in the mayor's proposed budget. We ended up moving that up an additional $4 million to $58 million, and that meant our whole borough budget as a whole relied on about $6.5 million from our lapsed funding, our general fund fund balance, which was, which is now about six, six and a half over our target reserve. And I know we can't control what you guys do with the money. Our math based on this was that we were getting about $8 million more than anticipated in one-time funding from the state. Again, this pattern of problematic one-time funding, but more than we expected, so we're hoping this puts you guys as a whole at a million more than you had anticipated. I know we still need to make sure that state funding comes through, and we can't direct what you guys do with this money, but I will just say, what came up during discussion was a hope for equal distribution for charter schools and non-charter schools that would follow the BSA formula, and also assistances for reducing that classroom size, that PTR count, but I'm eager to hear what you all decide to do. Otherwise, a few fun updates. We've had a big upgrade to Otanino Lakes Recreation Playground, so for any families listening, please check it out. It's amazing, and the water, the ice is gone. My family was there swimming just a couple of days ago, so you can go to the beach. Water's still a little cold, but it's fun. And Pioneer Park is otherwise fully open for the summer. We have a lot of new vendors, some good new food options, and there's putt-putt golf, lots of fun things, so please check it out. But other than that, don't have any other updates, but happy to answer questions.
Unusually quiet board tonight.
That's fine.
Doesn't appear to have any questions. Thank you so much for coming and providing us that report, and I have been to that new playground, and it is phenomenal, so thank you so much for the work the Borough has put into providing that for families.
Of course. Thank our Rotary. They helped fund it, so, anyway, thank you all.
Next on agenda, we have advisory member reports and comments, which tonight is just you, Colonel Alvarado, if you have any.
I have spoken enough, but I do appreciate it. Thank you very much. I'll miss you all.
We will miss you as well. Next, we have board committee reports. Is there anyone with committee reports? I know we've stopped meetings, so. Next is the president's report. Right? Looking at me like I'm wrong. Sorry. An update on our strategic plan. Last week, the team from Ed Elements completed its first round of in-person community engagements as part of our strategic plan data collecting phase. Their team conducted twenty-four focus groups with a total of 143 participants. Focus groups met for an hour each and gate, and hour each, and people gave their input on a variety of questions. The focus groups will be used in conjunction with the district-wide survey results where we had over 2,000 respondents. Ed Elements is now working to analyze the collected information and will provide a report to the board and the Strategic Planning and Steering Committee early this fall. Last night, our board completed its annual formal evaluation for Dr. Minert. It was a good opportunity for the board to look back at the past year and recognize all that has been accomplished under his leadership, as well as provide feedback and outline possible future goals for the years ahead. The board is collectively very grateful and pleased with the leadership Dr. Minert has provided the district this year, and will be considering the possibility of extending his contract by one year during the next regular meeting in August. From the entire board, we want to thank Dr. Minert for his hard work and leadership during his first year as our superintendent. The next item on our agenda is our superintendent report.
Thank you, President Hardy, and thank you to the board for this opportunity. And a little update on the survey results. We had over 4,000 survey submissions, and so quite a bit of data that Ed Elements is gonna crunch for us for the strategic planning. They'll combine those survey results along with the focus groups and provide that analysis for us. I want to start my report tonight with quite a few shout-outs of spring activities at the state level. Our students were highly successful this spring, and so this might take me a little while to get through, but want to give a shout-out to our student athletes that competed in state tournaments. So, for track boys, I want to congratulate Curtis Beck for his first-place finish in the 400-meter run and the second-place finish in the 200-meter run. In the high jump, Alex Emers from West Valley was second place in the state. Emmanuel Bostwick from West Valley was third place in the state in the high jump. In long jump, Lawson Wilson was second place from Lathrop High School, so great showing from our boys and track. Our girls also did great at the state meet. Leila Fields from West Valley placed second in the 100-meter run. In high jump, Ruby Tansey from Lathrop High School was second, and in the four-by-400 relay, Lathrop High School took third. And boys soccer, Lathrop and North Pole Boys Soccer Teams won the sportsmanship award in their respective state tournaments. We also, we always love to see the sportsmanship awards and academic awards that come our way. Gavin Wilson from Lathrop and Quinn Willis from West Valley made the all-tournament team. West Valley Girls Soccer Team won the sportsmanship award at the state tournament, and Kirsten Ostinez from Lathrop made the all-tournament team. West Valley High School Girls placed third in softball in the state, and Madison, and I apologize for the pronunciation I wasn't able to get with the principals on these, Indoredeon and Michaela Anderson from West Valley made the all-tournament team for softball state. That just happened last week here in Fairbanks. And then, North Pole Baseball showed up in a big way and placed second in the state with Simeon Langer and Keenan Borgan being on the all-tournament team. So, congratulations to all our student athletes and for representing our school district so well. I also want to congratulate the 41 Fairbanks students that just completed a two-week introduction to the trades program at the Pipeline Training Center. There's a wonderful article in the Daily News-Miner today highlighting that. And then, a huge thank you to Andrea Wade, our CTE Director here in the Fairbanks North Star Borough School District, and Johnny, John Denny from the Pipeline Training Center, as there's a lot of partnership that goes into making those opportunities available for our students. If you haven't gotten out there to see that training opportunity, I recommend that you do so in future summers. It provides our students with amazing opportunities to explore different career paths, and every year, we talk to students that are coming right out of that intro to the trades and going into apprenticeships. And so, we're still waiting on final numbers in terms of how many students are going into the trades, but we know that there's a number of them, and just want to congratulate them on their success, and I'm just so proud of the work that Fairbanks Schools are doing to prepare students for the workforce and for life. The Fairbanks North Star Borough School District is participating in the Summer Food Service Program, and that started yesterday. Meals will be provided to all children 18 years and younger and are free of charge. If you'd like to take advantage of those opportunities, we have two locations in Fairbanks this year, one at Barnett Magnet School, one at Hunter Elementary School. Both breakfast and lunch will be served Monday through Thursday in the month of June. I wanted to let parents and guardians know that the Noelween Public School, or not the public school, Noelween Public Library has been reopened, and their summer reading programs for children in our borough have begun. If you haven't checked out their new space, it's absolutely beautiful. It just makes me so proud to be a part of a community that has literacy on its mind and that is pouring into such a great facility. It's important for our students to continue to read over the summer months, so participate in those reading challenges at the library. They're fun, and it's a great activity to do with your students. Speaking of libraries, I did want to mention and comment on some of the testimony tonight. Fairbanks North Star Borough School District Libraries, parents and guardians can work with librarians and principals to restrict access to books so that they don't want their children to check out. So, if there's books that you find objectionable, you can work with the school and restrict access to those books, and so we're open to that. The district also has a parental right policy that provides parents and guardians with the option to work with teachers on alternative books and core academic classes as well. And so, just wanted to remind parents of that. We'll be sending out information in the fall, so parents know how to take advantage of that opportunity. The district participated in informal predetermination hearing on Monday of this week with the Department of Education Impact Aid Office. Impact Aid is a federal formula grant program for school districts whose local property tax revenue is negatively impacted by the presence of non-taxable federal land such as military bases. Section 7,009 states that if a state can demonstrate that school funding in the state is equalized by a method outlined in the statute and program regulations, which is called the disparity test, the Department of Education can grant permission to reduce state aid payments to the school districts by an eligible amount of impact aid received, and the state does this in Alaska by 90%. The test basically requires that the difference between the district with the highest and lowest per pupil spending after taking out the top and bottom 5% is no more than 25%. Section 7,009 states that the Department of Ed must provide school districts with an opportunity to present their views with respect to the state's data submission, and our district called for the hearing as we disagree with the state excluding correspondence students in their calculation when running the disparity test. For 12 years, the state included correspondence students, and then in FY21, they started to exclude them. When correspondence students are included in the calculation, the state fails the disparity test by all possible methods. If the state did not hold back the 90% of the impact aid from our district, it's possible we could receive six to seven million dollars more in revenue, which is a significant amount for the district. And so, this has been something that we've had ongoing conversations about with Alaska Deed, with the Department of Education, with our congressional delegates, and happy to have the opportunity to present our views with the Department of Education, and I'll keep people posted as to their determination on how that all shakes out. Getting to Colonel Alvarado, thank you for your leadership, your guidance, and your willingness to have really difficult conversations this year. What I appreciate most about you is just your professionalism. You and I entered into many difficult situations this year, and I always came away with knowing that even if we disagreed on the topic, that you were supportive and that you were amazingly professional in those circumstances, and so just want to thank you for that. And then, also, I vividly remember one of the first times you were up here speaking in front of a crowd and just recognizing your passion for the growth of Ileson and what great things we can do with our Ileson students out on base, and so I just really look up to you as a leader, the way that you're able to speak to crowds, the way that you're able to lead the men and women in your service is truly commendable, and so thank you for being an amazing leader, not only here at the school board dais, but for our country and our community, and I love that you're sticking around, because you said, January 1, you are unemployed, and we've got lots of positions open, so we're hoping that you apply. And then, and then lastly, I would like to thank the board and the community and all of our talented and amazing educators for a great first year. I do feel incredibly fortunate to have the opportunity to serve in, in the capacity of superintendent for the Fairbanks North Star Borough School District, and just look forward to many successful years ahead. So, thank you and happy to answer any questions from the board.
Not seeing any questions. Before we move on to our next agenda item, I've had a request for a brief five-minute recess, so we will return at 7:05. All right, I would like to call us back to order. We are back from our recess. Our next item on the agenda is Board Policy 9110, School Board Membership, Second Reading. May I have a motion?
Move to approve second reading, public hearing, and adoption of policy BB 9110.
We will go through public testimony in the order that we have signed up, and then people in the room will be able to provide testimony if time remains. So our first person who has signed up for public testimonies on this item is Ms. Melissa
Melissa Charlie, Fairbanks, C-H-A-R-L-I-E. Good evening. Today is my day two of Executive Director at FNA. Two weeks ago, I had talked to you about JOM services that have a direct impact on this district. Tonight, I just want to expand on FNA services that have an indirect positive impact with this school district. Our Head Start program funds 303 children from infant to kindergarten ready. Our Head Start program prepares the children for an easy transition into your schools. We partner with the school district SPED program for kids that have IEPs and Individual Family Service Plans, IFSPs, to provide support and referrals to address early interventions to prevent learning delays. The children graduating from our FNA Head Start enter into your schools thriving and eager to learn in their new big school. Our SOAP program, Street Outreach Advocacy Program, serves 12- to 18-year-olds that are homeless. We offer 10 beds and they can stay for up to 21 days. We provide case management, employment assistance, and housing assistance. We partner with OCS Juvenile Justice in this district. The program helps transition kids from being homeless to being self-sufficient. Our SOAP program directly works with schools, providing diapers, clothing, and backpacks. FNA Behavioral Health Services serves school-aged children in this community. For years, FNA has conducted community assessments, asset mapping, and program evaluation, and every single time, mental health services are always the greatest need in this community. For too many in the community, mental health services are hard to get, if not impossible, due to the lack of licensed professionals. FNA has been providing this service to school-aged students and will continue to improve the health and wellness of our community members. All of these services I briefly touched on are not specific to Native students. They help all children. FNA's vision is we are a unified, healthy, and empowered Native community that embraces all cultures, and that is what we would bring to this board. FNA would be an asset to the school board, given our educational program services and experience. I would like to leave you with a Henry Ford quote. "Coming together is the beginning. Keeping together is progress. Working together is success." Basi. Also, I was in the focus group last Wednesday. I was the only one who logged on, but it was really good, and we did talk a lot about communication. So thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we have Mr. Travis Cole.
Good evening. My name is Travis Cole, C-O-L-E. I was born here in Fairbanks, and I spent most of my life here. And I've been on the board of FNA for over 10 years now. I have three Native children that I'm engaged with their education here in Fairbanks. And my journey in life has really not been an easy one. Growing up here in Fairbanks, I've been through being homeless, being incarcerated, you know, but it was during my years of school that when I moved here, as my childhood in Ale Kakkitt, I moved here and I struggled in the school system. And the people that helped me were like the FNA people, A&E, you know, a few good teachers that, you know, helped me through my difficulty of dyslexia and things like that. So, you know, I think it's really good that we have people like that that are intertwined, working together with other staff and teachers in your system. They, you know, put me into Howard Luke, and Howard Luke is what really helped me graduate high school because when I went to Lathrop, I was failing miserably from school, you know, hard time getting to school. You know, I lived in low income and a single mom raised me. And so I graduated in '94 from Howard Luke Alternative. And growing up, you know, is a cultural part of me that really saved me too because I learned how to sing Native songs. I learned a lot about our stories, our history, and everything like that. And that wasn't really shown so much in our schools, but I was able to learn it from elders and being part of the community. I serve a lot of time volunteering here in the community of Fairbanks for any kind of event from Ale Kakkitt, but my dad was from Hartford, Connecticut. So I've always embraced both sides of my cultures. And, you know, what I went through as a young person, I could have easily just been a statistic. But my gifts were, kind of came out and blossomed from the help of people like, you know, the tutors and people of FNA and A&E. But, you know, I just want you to know that there's a lot of young people that are going through adversity right now in your school system, and I believe that FNA could really help. And, you know, I'm a strong advocate to that. You know, my voice now is to look out for not just them, but everybody in our community to work together and get along. And I think it's important that FNA has an seat on your board. But thank you very much. Navasi.
We do have a question for you, if you don't mind. Colonel Alvarado.
I don't have a question. Mr. Cole, thank you very much for sharing that. I think you're the very vulnerable, the very clear look back at how your life has been and what you've been through. I appreciate you sharing that because that's context not everybody has. And to know that it's taken some level of support, which means we need to do more in the future. Thank you for sharing that and congratulations for being here, and thank you for coming today.
Thank you. I just try to be an example for my young people that no matter how hard life could be, you know, you could rise above and be something better for yourself and your family and your community.
I admire that you very much, sir.
Basi.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Steve Guinness.
It's all good to see all of you again. I was shared your first reading of this policy. My name is Steve Guinness, G-I-N-N-I-S. I just retired as Executive Director of Fairbanks Native Association. I'm now a resident of Fairbanks, and I'm not going away. I'm going to continue to advocate, help our Native population out to the best of my ability. Now, I just wanted to address several things that were set here at the first reading of this policy. There was some talk about other organizations. There was talk about this might set a precedent, and I just want to address that, okay? I think there's really some misunderstanding here. Number one, Fairbanks Native Association is respected for speaking on behalf of all the Native people that live right here in Fairbanks. Doesn't matter what corner of the state of Alaska they come from, they're represented by Fairbanks Native Association. Secondly, the very issues that this organization has been addressing, the dropout rates, graduation rates, and all these other issues. We're taking the lead, and it affects all the students regardless of their race across the school district. This is just not a Native issue. And so we're speaking on behalf of all those students. It's just not the Native kids we're talking about here because they have these gaps as well, achievement gaps, you know, graduation rates and all this stuff. They're all impacted by these issues. And we just happen to be in a position to be speaking to these issues. And if it wasn't for that mitigation agreement, we wouldn't be at the table. It's just simple as that. That's what brings us to the table. We sit across from the superintendent and his administration when we're negotiating these very points I'm talking about and having discussions around it. And then we also have focus groups that are set up to further dig into these issues. So it's not just sit down, negotiate something out, and we're done. There's work to be done here. So thank you so much for your time. Basi.
Thank you for your testimony.
Hi, I'm Stuart Earhart, E-R-H-A-R-T. I'm like here to represent FNA, and, you know, I'm a product of FNA. I've been in the educational system. I just graduated last year from West Valley High School. I got Gatorade Player two times in the state of Alaska and thankful for FNA, for their leadership programs, their community service. And, you know, I grew up, I came from a small village and then came here, and I've been in all three levels of education here, from elementary to middle school. And, you know, they helped me. Like, I couldn't add IEP, and I get really emotional about it because, you know, I'm still young, but, you know, just them helping like the program and the community, and it's not even about Native Americans, you know? I see other kids that they help, like other kids in the class that I was with just last year. And just seeing like, as Steve was saying, like the graduation rates, like I see some of my friends last year that didn't graduate, and it gets like, I get emotional about it because, you know, they're good people, just like everybody in here, they're good people. And, you know, FNA is just like a representation of our cultural values of respect and other things like that. And, you know, I'm just, I just want to come up here and tell you guys, like, I'm a product of it, and this is the community, and this is where my home is, and home is where our people are. And, you know, FNA is a big part of the community here in Fairbanks, and that's all I'd like
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we have Patrick Mayer. Is on Zoom, actually. That would be why.
Yes. Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Wonderful. So first, I'd like to thank Board President Hardy and other members of the board for allowing me to testify tonight. My name is Patrick Mayer. My residence in the Fairbanks North Starborough is located at 790 Birch Knoll Road. I'm also the school superintendent of the Alaska Gateway School District. But most importantly, I am an advocate for all students everywhere. And to speak to that, Board Vice President Doran will remember, I'm sure, when I was the principal at Delta High School and we partnered to bring Asian performers to both his school and the schools in the Delta Greeley School District. But tonight, I'm testifying in support of approving BB 9110 and allowing an FNA advisory board member. In today's world of public education, partnerships are immeasurably important. Good-to-great partnerships are exceptionally important, especially where both partners are laser-focused on the same goal, which I believe to be the situation before you tonight with the decision or not to appoint an advisory FNA board member. There is little doubt that FNA is an exemplary partner. Their financial contributions alone to the Fairbanks North Starborough School District are in the tens of thousands of dollars annually. This is in itself extraordinary since in light of those donations, for many years, the Alaska Native student subgroup overall continues to struggle academically. Perpetuating a strong partnership with an advisory board member with FNA ties will very strongly encourage additional ongoing review of data associated with Alaska Native students and others. And myself, having many years of experience in predominantly Native student communities throughout Alaska, this is a great opportunity. It is time for all of us to work together and agree to have an increased focus on underperforming subgroups, especially Alaska Native students. With your approval to appoint an advisory board member to the Fairbanks North Starborough School District Board, you have the opportunity to enhance and develop processes to better meet students' needs across an increasingly broad spectrum. Please vote in support of adding an advisory board member from FNA. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we have Ms. Kristin Schupp.
Kristin Schupp, S-C-H-U-P-P, Farmers Loop. I'm representing only myself. I am in support of an FNA-appointed representative having a permanent advisory seat on the Fairbanks North Starborough School Board, joining our military and student representatives. I want to address some of the hesitation and resistance by some board members at the first reading two weeks ago to support this policy addition. One critique of the policy seemed to be the slippery slope fallacy, the idea that if we let one underrepresented group become a school board member, then that will open the doors to having to include even more underrepresented groups needing to have a represented seat. But those making that argument do not seem to understand why having an Alaska Native representative on the school board is different and why it is essential. I don't think that they must really understand what it means to be on the unceded land of Indigenous peoples and why it is so important for them to have a seat at the table to assist in guiding our school district's path. To acknowledge being on the unceded lands of Indigenous people... To acknowledge being on the unceded lands of Indigenous peoples acknowledges that this land was stolen from them. To put it another way, this table before you that you sit at was stolen from the Indigenous Alaska natives by the Russians and then wrongly sold to the Americans. You are sitting at a stolen table. And the very least you can do is give a permanent seat to an Alaska Native leader at the table that rightly belongs to their people. This is their table. Please let them sit at it. Another concern that was raised by a board member seemed to be the question of whether or not FNA was the proper Native group to decide on an Alaska Native representative for the school board. I would say that this discussion has been on the table for many years with plenty of opportunities for another entity to come forward to say that they feel like they should be the ones to appoint a representative. I'd say let's trust the experts, the Alaska Native community in this situation. If it needs to change down the road, that can happen. But right now, it is long overdue for our school board to have a permanent Alaska Native representative. Ad adjacent to that argument was suggested that perhaps because an FNA member is a representative of Fairbanks FNA, that perhaps they wouldn't be as concerned about Native students coming from other communities. And I think that that is insulting and again seems to miss the point of having an Alaska Native representative. I fully expect and believe that a Fairbanks Native Association appointee would embrace and uplift all Alaska Native children in our schools as well as the entire student body, just as it is expected of every single one of you. You all are expected to assist in providing an excellent equitable education to all students, no matter who they are or where they come from. Having a permanent Alaska Native representative on the board will strengthen and enhance our school district and our community by bringing their vital experience, knowledge, and wisdom to the table. It is my hope that this board will unanimously accept and welcome an FNA-appointed representative to have a permanent seat on the Fairbanks North Starborough School Board. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we have Mr. Aaron Crook.
My name is Aaron Crook, last name spelled C.R.O.O.K. And I live here in Fairbanks. President Hardy, Vice President Doran, members of the school board, I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. And I'm here to ask that you vote yes to adding an advisory member to the school board from the Fairbanks Native Association. As you all know, 30% of the students in our district are Native. The significant portion of our student body carries with them rich cultural traditions, unique perspectives, and invaluable contributions to our community. Yet, despite their substantial presence, these students and families are often unrepresented in their decisions that directly impact their educational experience. Adding an advisory member from the Fairbanks Native Association is not just a matter of representation, it's a matter of equity and justice. This advisory role would ensure that the voices of Native students and their families are not only heard, but are actively integrated into the fabric of our decision-making process. Their unique insights and needs must be considered to create an educational environment that is truly inclusive and supportive. Moreover, having a Native advisory member will provide our board with a deeper understanding of the cultural heritage and traditions of Native students. This understanding is essential for developing policies and programs that are culturally responsive, ensuring that all students feel seen, respected, and valued. Including a Fairbanks Native Association advisory member would also symbolize our commitment to equity and recognition of the historical and ongoing contributions of Native communities. It is a step towards correcting historical exclusions and promoting a more just and fair educational system. Representation matters. When Native students see themselves reflected in leadership and decision-making bodies of their schools, it fosters a sense of belonging and empowerment. It shows that we as a district are committed to valuing and uplifting every student. By taking this step, we not only enrich our school board with diverse perspectives, but also set a powerful example for our entire community. We demonstrate that we are dedicated to creating an educational system that honors and includes all voices, preparing our students to thrive in a multicultural world. Let us seize this opportunity to make a meaningful change. Let us show our Native students and their families that their voices matter. Together, we can build a more inclusive, equitable, and just educational system. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. That concludes all of our pre-signed up testimony. If there is anyone in the room who would like to provide testimony on this item, you are welcome to come up. Just be sure to state your first name, spell your last name, and you will have, and then say your area of residence and you'll have three minutes.
Hello, I'm Shirley Lee. I'm a Fairbanks resident. First of all, I am not Sharon McConnell, who served on the school board for almost 12 years. I'm her twin sister. So just wanted to get that out of the way. I'm here tonight to, both as a FNA past executive director and a current employee, Strategic Development and Justice Director, and also just as a mother who had six children go through the school system here. I want to add my support for the advisory seat. I just want to gently remind all the board members here that this is an idea that is 37 years in the making. It's born out of a lawsuit, an mediation agreement between FNA and the school district. It is a mediation settlement consideration that should be brought to reality. A hundred years ago, when Sharon and I were in high school, we, we were very good students, not to brag. But we also attended an FNA program called Project Now, which provided a cultural component to our education that the school district could not. And because of that program, both Sharon and I graduated with many college credits and were able to advance our education. The cultural component is something that FNA can bring to the school board. They have great experience in working with educational programs. And they are experienced in some of the more complex grant, grants that we receive. So I'm really confident that FNA could provide a wonderful addition to the board that should not be ignored. And let's put this 37-year idea into reality. Use FNA. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Hi, I'm Cecilia Babes Hudson. I work for FNA and I work in the elementary schools. And proud to say that we have some really good principals out there that support us, believe in us. And in turn, we help them fill the cracks. We help them with anything they need, when they want it. And I just want to show a picture. This is 1915. This is of the Seven Chiefs. They call them the Ten Thousand Chiefs is where they got the name. This was a meeting at the University of Alaska, 1915. My great-grandfather is in the middle. His name is Chief Thomas from Nianna, Wood River. This was a meeting about when they got the land up there. And they had to get the blessings of the chiefs because the land didn't belong to them. It belonged to the natives. But these chiefs made an agreement, if you read it, I found it in a couple articles. They made an agreement saying, "We can't fight the Western coming into our life, but we can help our young people by teaching them the Western way so that we can also encourage our young people to learn, to understand why the land is taken away." But we're not, it's not taken away. We're going to give it to you. But Chief Thomas made an agreement with Wickersham. He's in this photo, as well as many others at the university level. They agreed that they would teach our people. And that's all the chiefs were asking in return. Please educate our people. We're going to need it if we're going to live beside you, eat beside you, learn beside you. And we're doing that today. We have an agreement with the school district with that mitigation plan. And we want, what we want is what you want. So what I'm saying is, this is nothing new. Back in 1915, our chiefs were fighting for the very thing we're asking here. Give us a voice, give us a seat, and we can work together. I don't see any reason why we can't work together. And most of the schools were very accepted, worked very well with the district. But if you get a chance, it's the University of Alaska 1915 agreement. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Was there, sorry.
Hi, school board. My name is Alexis Howell. Last name is H.O.W.E.L.L. I live in Cripple Creek. I've been here in Fairbanks now for almost six years. I came up here with the Army and just fell in love with it. So here I am. I'm here to testify in support of a permanent FNA advisory board member. I should also add that I'm a current member of the Diversity Committee here for the school board. And we've drafted a similar resolution. And I come not only to restate similar things, but my own personal views as to why this is so important. I also know that I'm an attorney here locally in town. So each school board meeting begins by acknowledging that we are on the unceded lands of the Lower Tanana-Dene people. These words mean nothing if we don't actually do something about that. This position is simply an actual acknowledgement of that history rather than simple lip service that we're on some lands. It, it's a critical commitment to recognizing that. Additionally, this position is critical to the success of all students in our district. It's undeniable that unfortunately, the school-to-prison pipeline is alive and well across the country, including here in our borough. Specifically, that means that quality education and equitable disciplinary action in schools is critical to reducing the prevalence of incarceration within our community, also to reducing crime within our community. Currently, the incarcerated population across Alaska, including here in Fairbanks, is extraordinarily disproportionately comprised of Alaska Native peoples. It's not because they commit more crimes, it's because our system is set up to do this. Reducing this disparity, integrating true equity into our entire community, and truly acknowledging the lands that we live and learn on begins with the appointment of a representative dedicated to the concerns and cultural considerations of the Fairbanks Alaska Native people. Reducing disproportionate incarceration begins in our schools. And this representative is a way to, to make that happen. Again, this isn't just a question of inclusion within our schools. It's a question of improving the Fairbanks North Starborough as a whole. This appointments, the appointment of this position is frankly a no-brainer. I'm honestly a little confused as to why there's been so much debate about this. This isn't a slippery slope issue here. This is an issue of we are on the lands of people who never intended to give us their lands and the least we can do is acknowledge their people and give them a forum in which to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Is there anyone else in the room?
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Hilker. The last name is H.I.L.K.E.R. And I live in the Goldstream Valley here in Fairbanks. I want to thank you for honoring public testimony at your meetings. And I'm humbled by what has already been heard here tonight. And I agree with what I have heard as well as a lot of what I heard at your last meeting when you, when there was the first reading. I showed up tonight to speak in favor of appointing an advisory member from the Fairbanks Native Association. As expressed by the FNA representatives at your last meeting, board meeting, you have their desire and trust in accepting an appointment to the board. So this coupled with a better path to meet the needs of all children in our district warrants my support of this addition to the school board membership policy. An average of 20% of Fairbanks School District students have identified as Alaska Native, American Indian in the last five years, according to the district's data dashboard. This past year, the exact number was 20.9%. In 2223, 20.6%. In 2122, 20.6%. In 2021, 20.7%. And in 19, 2019 to 20, 20.1%. I just bring this up because it was stated at the last meeting that it was 18%. And when I went and looked at the data dashboard, that was for the average over the past 18 years. So since 2006, 2007, the numbers have steadily risen from 15.5%. So a group of 20% of children in our district could be better represented and have their needs voiced at every meeting and therefore considered in every decision of this board by a representative member. As voiced at the first reading of this policy, the board is made up primarily of non-Native members. Although you may have good intentions, you may come from a good education, you are good people, and you might have diverse exposures. We, you don't have the lived experience of an Indigenous person. And that gives the perspective that is critical when making decisions for a diverse group that includes the people of this land. The impact your decisions have on children from Indigenous families is significant to their education and their well-being. And the spoken perspective from a representative of FNA will provide the needed input that will enable you to meet children's needs and understand specifically how your decisions affect them and their families.
Thank you for your testimony.
Hello. Brianna Gray, Suck the Cook, King Cove, Ilagun, Nutha Cook, North Pole, Ilan, Onagakazook. So my name is Brianna Gray, G.R.A.Y., and I live in North Pole. All right. I am testifying today to show my full support for a permanent advisory member tribal representative on our school board. Indigenous leaders have been advocating for this for years and I'm so excited to see this opportunity on the table. Every school board meeting and land acknowledgement is recited. And what a wonderful opportunity to back up this vocal support with action. Indigenous ways of knowing and learning emphasize nurturing relationships not only with and among leaders, but also with the larger community and the environment which students spend time. Having a tribal representative on the school board can ensure that every student, staff member, and community member sees the visibility of Indigenous representation within the board. This visibility sends a powerful message of respect and recognition of our Indigenous communities' contributions to our schools and society as a whole. The visibility of a tribal representative on the board fosters a more cohesive and understanding community where all members feel valued and heard. And to be clear, Indigenous people not only bring a cultural perspective, but we also are educated, experienced, and capable of engaging in all school board conversations for all students. I fully want to be very clear as well that I fully support Fairbanks Native Association delegating a tribal representative on the Fairbanks North Starborough School Board. As a community and school district, we consistently request communities, families, and students to engage, support, and collaborate. And the Fairbanks Native Association has continuously pulled up and been engaging and demonstrated support verbally, physically, financially, through shared communication, staffing in our schools, and providing support to remove barriers for all students and families. And I think it's also important to note, I didn't write this down, but I think this is also important to note that just because we have a tribal representative from Fairbanks Native Association doesn't mean that we don't continue to collaborate, engage, and work with other Indigenous organizations. We do work with Tana Chiefs Conference and they provide different programs like the TCT Go program. We were just recently at a Dwayan meeting where we were working with students on what they want to do with their careers. So that doesn't limit our collaboration in the community as Indigenous peoples. I'm not from the interior, I'm from the Lusian Islands. But community, it really takes a village, and community means all of us. And that is something that I know will stand true. Kukaskuk.
Thank you for your testimony. Is there anyone else in the room?
Hello, my name is Diana Campbell. I work at FNA. My last name is S.
My last name is C-A-M-P-B-E-L-L. I live in Fairbanks. So listening to this, I had to think about my grandmother, Jean Fredson Frank. And in the early 1940s, my grandfather died. He was a schoolteacher in Vinny Tai. And when he died, my grandmother took over and was a schoolteacher in Vinny Tai. Chaukeetsek Beaver, then ended up in Kotsebu. So she was a schoolteacher for decades. When my mother died in 1970, she moved to Fairbanks to be with us, the young children my mother left behind. So she applied for a job here at the school district. Because she, she had all the, she had decades of experience as being a schoolteacher, but she could only be hired as a teacher's aide and was part of the early Alaska Native Education Department. It was just starting about that time. And she did really good at it. She liked it. She was good. I, I think some of her family felt a little put out because she wasn't hired as a teacher because she loved to teach children how to read. It was one of her favorite things to do. But everywhere, whenever I was with her in public, there'd be some little kid yelling across the store or wherever we were at, "There's Mrs. Frank, there's my teacher." But I'm telling you this because for, for all kinds of reasons, I was expelled from the North Starborough School District. I was not allowed to attend, I was in high school. But I straightened up, I turned my life around, and then I finished high school. And it was all because I could hear my mother and my grandmother in my head saying, "You have to get an education." And just from those words, "You have to get an education, you have to get an education." And let me tell you, every Native meeting I have ever been to, there's somebody that has gotten up and said, "You have to get an education, you have to get an education." And I did. And I got an associate degree. I mean, I got, I got my high school diploma, and then I got an associate degree, I got a bachelor's degree, and then I ended up with a master's degree, and now I'm part of senior management at FNA. Education got me somewhere. And let me tell you, our people have been planning and working on this. These, the people I work with at FNA are experts in what they do, and they love these students. And they sacrifice, I've seen sacrifices of what our staff has done with students at FNA. So it's our time. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Is there anyone else in the room? Seeing none, public testimony is now closed. At this time, we'll start with Mr. Doran and then Ms. Maradi.
Thank you. Two weeks ago, when we had first reading on this policy, I raised concerns and questions that were aimed in terms of this solution to a very real concern. But in reflection, I recognize that my words were not as thoughtful and considered as I had hoped. And I want to apologize to anyone who heard my words as minimizing your experience or being disrespectful in any way. That is not my intent, and neither is it the way I feel. And I want to say that I greatly value the work that FNA has done. And I've been very privileged, and I've learned because of partnering with FNA over the years in my career, my personal life. And I don't want to lose that in any way. I do continue with some concerns, but they're small in the big picture. And I want to be clear that I look forward to working cooperatively for the benefit of all kids. I am heartened by the testimony we've had over the last several weeks, the opportunity for me to reflect and think. And I will be voting in support of this position tonight.
Ms. Maradi.
First, to those that testified tonight, thank you. And also to those that testified at the last time we heard this policy. Also to the Indigenous community members that we've heard from, three minutes is not enough, and I hope we can change that tonight. I also want to share my gratitude with the Diversity Committee for starting this conversation as a committee with a letter of support to the Alaska Native Education Board in 2018, 2019, and for not giving up when they were told no. And for continuing to advocate for our district to appoint an Indigenous advisory member to include a proposed resolution that they have been extra hard at work for the last six months but has yet made it to the board's agenda. So tonight, I am proud to read it on their behalf. "Fairbanks North Starborough Board of Education Resolution 2024 to be determined in support of Fairbanks Native Association Advisory Board Member. Whereas, the Fairbanks North Starborough School District sits on the ancestral lands of the Lower Tannanot-Dene peoples, acknowledging Alaska Indigenous peoples' enduring connection and stewardship of this territory. And whereas, the United States has a history marred by Indigenous genocide and forced assimilation, the effects of which continue to impact Indigenous students, staff, and families. And whereas, schooling has a very traumatic history for US Indigenous peoples as the last assimilation boarding schools did not close until 1978. And whereas, Indigenous students are often exposed to racism, violence, microaggressions, curriculum biases, and suppression of cultural ways of being which collectively pose significant barriers to their academic success and wellbeing. And whereas, Indigenous students comprise over 20% of the student population within the Fairbanks North Starborough School District. And whereas, the Every Student Succeeds Act title recognizes that the best people to ensure that the Fairbanks North Starborough's education programs that serve Indigenous children are of the highest quality and provide for not only the basic elementary and secondary educational needs, but also the unique educational and culturally related academic needs of these children." That is from the Every Student Succeeds Act, Section 6101, and that they are Indigenous themselves. And whereas, having an Indigenous representative serve on the board in an advisory capacity is essential to addressing attendance, fostering holistic academic achievement, and increasing graduation rates with Indigenous students. And whereas, the Fairbanks North Starborough School Board already has several advisory representatives, including a student representative and two military representatives, we must recognize that an Indigenous representative is needed to support the unique needs of our Indigenous students. And whereas, the Fairbanks North Starborough School District School Board Advisory Diversity Committee believes that having an appointed Indigenous representative in an advisory role on the Fairbanks North Starborough School District School Board is imperative in amplifying the voices of Indigenous students, families, and staff during the educational decision-making process as an essential step forward in creating a school district that can provide an excellent equitable education and a safe and supportive environment so that all students will succeed and contribute to a diverse and changing society. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the Fairbanks North Starborough School District School Board will appoint one advisory member to a seat on the Fairbanks North Starborough School District School Board. The Indigenous representative shall have the opportunity to participate in discussions and decision-making processes regarding policies, programs, and initiatives that impact Indigenous students with the goal of ensuring that their educational experiences are culturally responsive, inclusive, and supportive of their holistic wellbeing. The Indigenous representative shall serve as a liaison between the Fairbanks North Starborough School Board and the Indigenous community, facilitating communication, understanding, and partnership in pursuit of educational excellence and equity for all students. Therefore, be it further resolved that the Fairbanks North Starborough School Board shall provide necessary support and resources to the Indigenous representative to fulfill their role effectively, including access to relevant information, training opportunities, and meaningful engagement in school board activities. Along with it shall take effect immediately upon adoption of the Fairbanks North Starborough School Board that, and shall be communicated to all relevant stakeholders within the school district and the Indigenous community."
Colonel Alvarado.
Just want to quickly follow up and say that when the vote comes out, I'll be voting in favor of it. First off, from a DoD perspective, it's, it's new, but it's, it's very encouraging. We're being directed, both, I believe, the Army is as well. We are actually standing up, having doctrinal positions where we have tribal liaisons with the military. And again, that lets us know that obviously, understanding whenever we move to a place like this, that is an actual part of doing business, and it's not just about flying airplanes. It's about making sure that we're understanding and integrating with the community. And the DoD feels like that's a critical part of it. So that is, that's a major driver for why I'll be saying yes. The other part of it as well is we're still on all volunteer services made up with everybody in the community. Therefore, if this gives us an opportunity to get more exposure to folks that previously may not have wanted to consider joining, you know, a service, obviously, the Air Force would be preferable, but any service at all, this is definitely, this is definitely something that we're in favor of. Thank you.
Mr. Burgess.
I just want to, I'll keep it brief, but I just want to speak in support of this again. Because of all the, I'm really grateful for all of the testimony from folks that came in. We had 13 people testifying today, all in support, unanimous support, to add an advisory member. And, and it helped, it really, you know, I learned something tonight. I learned a few things from, from people who testified. And that's exactly why we need a voice on our board. Because I can't, you know, I have a different experience from all y'all. I might not know all the history. And to me, it really comes down to a couple of things. We are on Indigenous land, that's a big one. We have 20% of our student population or over 20%. And, you know, we, that might be an underestimate because there might be people who aren't reporting their, their race or ethnicity. And I really think that we need a voice on this board to help that population and, and to help all of our students in the same way. So I really want to, just wanted to extend my thanks to everyone who came in and spoke tonight and to, and all the folks who emailed as well. Again, all the emails were unanimous in support of this. So thanks to the community for showing up and expressing your support for our Native leaders and our Native community. Thanks.
Not seeing anyone else, I'm going to put myself in the queue, and then we'll go to the vote. I will let my comments from our last time considering this stand, so I'll be brief. I live by a motto of "Those who dare to teach must never cease to learn." And while I'm no longer in a classroom, I am a leader in our community, and I think it equally applies to leaders. If you're going to dare to lead, you need to learn. And I have learned, like Mr. Burgess, a tremendous amount tonight. And I look forward to learning from an FNA representative on our board. I think it is a long time coming, and I am so excited. I think this is a gift that we are giving our community, and this is a gift that we are giving future boards to have this perspective and to have a seat at the table that's not limited to three minutes. With that, Ms. Polland, would you please call the vote? Colonel Alvarado.
Yes.
Mr. Doran.
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett.
Yes.
Ms. Maple.
Yes.
Mr. Burgess.
Yes.
Mrs. Sanderson.
Yes.
Ms. Maradi.
Yes.
Mrs. Hardy.
Yes.
Motion carried. We're going to take a five-minute recess.
Information if that's allowable under state regulation.
No, but I do feel like it would be allowable. Basically, I think what Member Burnett is saying is that some of the stipulations that are set forth in that policy, military members wouldn't meet because of their transient nature. They might not have been here for 30 days. They might not be voting members, but they are still eligible to be an advisory member on the school board. And so I think that's the intent of the amendment that Ms. Burnett has presented to the board.
Follow up, Mr. Doran.
Okay, I think you may have just answered my question in terms of it's an advisory member. They're not a candidate for the school board, and this is qualifications to be a candidate for school board. So I, I think that the intent of the amendment is already met, that the advisory members are not subject to these qualifications.
Ms. Burnett.
Thank you, President Hardy. In this policy, we have this outlined for our student advisory member. And so I thought it relevant and appropriate to outline this for our military advisory members, just so that it's very clear that they are allowed to be here on this board without having to have residency and voting capabilities within a certain amount of time.
Could you give me the policy number again one more time?
Ninety-two-ten. Oh, sorry, page nineteen.
Mr. Doran.
Through the chair to the maker of the amendment, would it be your intent then that perhaps simply saying an advisory board member is eligible for appointment without meeting the above qualifications?
Ms. Burnett.
No, as I absolutely feel that when it comes to the FNA advisory members, we would still want those qualifications to be in there. The reason for this is this is military, and as explained earlier, military is transient. They move around a lot. Sometimes they come directly here and then have an appointment to our board. And so this gives them that leeway to be able to be here without the questions of, well, did they come to these stipulations?
Ms. Maple.
I was just gonna, oh, I lost it again. Clarify that my understanding is that that would just go directly under the student qualification. So it's outside of the rest of the qualifications. Okay, yeah, I'm in support.
Ms. Burnett.
Yeah, I would just reiterate what Ms. Maple said, that yes, that that would be my intention. And that's where the language would go, just right there underneath the student advisory part. So where it says a district student is eligible for appointment as an advisory board member without meeting the above qualifications, we would then add another part that says military advisory members are also eligible for appointment without meeting the voter registration or residency requirements.
Mr. Doran.
Through the chair, and I'm not necessarily, not in support of this, but I'd like to get military advisor perspective on it.
What specifically do you want the perspective on?
Okay, I guess question of whether the qualifications for candidate as above would present a difficulty for someone coming in in like your position or Colonel Coles.
I think it would be hard to say that, and again, this is kind of speculative. I think the qualifications that we have for the military and how you look at somebody coming in, I think there'll probably have to be a discussion on what those qualifications would be.
Follow up.
Mr. Doran, go ahead.
And I'm thinking that, for instance, the qualification there being a registered voter in the state of Alaska could be problematic since as officers you move around and you may have your, you may have a registration.
Right, I am not an Alaskan, that is an example.
Okay, so, thank you. That's helpful to just get a sense, to know where they would be problematic or if it's that could be quite otherwise.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
To that point, Colonel Cole, so clarifying question. You are not a registered voter in the state of Alaska currently.
I am not.
So it has been our current practice to already waive this requirement. And I also know as a military, seeing that policies. Ms. Maradi.
I'm gonna actually wait till this specific discussion's over, sorry. Raise my hand too soon.
Any further comments or questions on this amendment? Could you be sure to email it to Ms. Pollin so that she has a record? Seen none. Ms. Pollin, could you please call the vote on the amendment?
Colonel Alvarado.
Yes.
Mr. Doran.
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett.
Yes.
Ms. Maple.
Yes.
Mr. Burgess.
Yes.
Ms. Maradi.
Yes.
Mrs. Hardy.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Now we are back to the main motion as amended. Is there any comments on the main motion? Seen none. Ms. Pollin, could you please call the vote for the main motion? A yes vote passes the entire package. A no vote would send it back to be reconsidered.
Colonel Alvarado.
Yes.
Ms. Maradi.
Yes.
Mr. Doran.
Yes.
Ms. Burnett.
Yes.
Ms. Maple.
Yes.
Mr. Burgess.
Yes.
Mrs. Hardy.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Where about? My computer is giving me an issue, but I do have a paper copy. Thank you, Ms. Pollin, to make sure I'm on the next one.
Wait, are we?
That was the, we're on the next item on the agenda, but it's not refreshing on my computer. I know what it is, but I want to make sure I get it right. Sorry. The next item on our agenda is Board Policy 9012, Communications to and From the School Board. Second reading. May I have a motion?
Move to approve second reading, public hearing, and adoption of Policy BB 9012.
Second.
I am sorry, as I'm trying to play with technology that does not want to cooperate. Is there any, we have no pre-signed up testimony. Is there anyone in the room who would like to provide testimony on this item? Seen none, public testimony is now closed. Is there any board discussion on this item? Take a brief at ease. Okay, we are back to the main motion. Is there any public comment on this item? It is the communications to and from the board. Mr. Burgess.
So just wanted to point, remind everyone that this was revised following our discussion at the first reading. And so I had, I had sent in a proposed amendment, which I see is included in the version in front of us. And I hope that that satisfies all of the discussion that we had had at the first reading and previously.
Is there any further comments on this item? Seen none. Ms. Richard, or not Ms. Richardson, Ms. Pollin, would you please call the vote?
Colonel Alvarado.
Yes.
Ms. Maradi.
Yes.
Mr. Doran.
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett.
Yes.
Ms. Maple.
Yes.
Mr. Burgess.
Yes.
Mrs. Hardy.
Yes.
Motion carried.
The next item on our agenda is Board Policy 9324, School Board Minutes, Second Reading. May I have a motion?
Move to approve second reading, public hearing, and adoption of Policy BB 9324.
Second.
Is there any public testimony on this item? Seen none, public testimony is now closed. Is there any board discussion on this item? Seen none, Ms. Pollin, would you please call the vote?
Colonel Alvarado.
Yes.
Mr. Burgess.
Yes.
Ms. Maradi.
Yes.
Mr. Doran.
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett.
Yes.
Ms. Maple.
Yes.
Mrs. Hardy.
Yes.
Motion carried.
The next item on our agenda is Fiscal Year 2026 to 2031 Six-Year Capital Improvement Plan and Adoption. The Alaska Department of Education and Early Development, DED, requires the board adopt a six-year capital improvement plan to be submitted annually by September 1st in order to be considered for state grant funding. The administration is now submitting the Fiscal Year 2026 to 2031 Six-Year Capital Improvement Plan for adoption by the school board. Administration will speak to this plan.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us here.
Could you make sure the mic is on?
Can you hear me? I'm here to present the 2026-2031 Six-Year Capital Improvement. We only made some minor changes. We added Effie Cochran on the first year, 2026. We also added the Lathrop High School track repairs. Northport High Mechanical renovation, that's still number one on our list. Arctic Light Elementary exterior renovation is still number two. And then Tannenham Middle School is number three. And so those are the only other changes that we made was adding Howard Luke and adding the Lathrop track. I also have on number 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, and those are funds that we already have. Redirection of funds as well as funds that the borough are doing projects for the U Park, exterior renovation, as well as the Lathrop kitchen upgrade.
Is there any questions for the administration? Not seen any. May I have a motion?
Move to adopt the FY 2026-2031 Six-Year Capital Improvement Plan.
Second.
Is there anyone in the room wishing to provide public testimony on this item? Seen none, public testimony is now closed. Is there any board discussion on this item? Seen none, Ms. Pollin, would you please call the vote?
Colonel Alvarado.
Yes.
Ms. Maple.
Yes.
Mr. Burgess.
Yes.
Ms. Maradi.
Yes.
Mr. Doran.
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett.
Yes.
Mrs. Hardy.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you to the administration for your help with this.
Thank you.
Our next item on the agenda is the Proposed Curriculum for Grades 6 through 12 Science. The administration provided a report to the school board on the curriculum materials proposed for Grades 6 through 12 Science at the May 21st meeting. The curriculum is now before the board for adoption. The administration recommends the adoption of this curriculum as submitted. May I please have a motion?
Move to adopt the curriculum proposed for Grades 6 through 12 Science as submitted. Second.
Is there any public testimony on this item? Seen none, public testimony is now closed. Is there any board discussion on this item? Mr. Burgess.
I just wanted to say, you know, that one more time to thank the Curriculum Committee and all the members of the public who commented and provided feedback, as well as the administration for the hard work that they did on this. And rather than repeating this for the next three items, I'm just gonna say that that comment applies to all of the curriculum discussion. And I hope the board supports this. Thanks.
Is there any further board comment on this item? Seen none. A yes approves the curriculum, and a no would send it back for reconsideration. Ms. Pollin, would you please call the vote?
Colonel Alvarado.
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett.
Yes.
Ms. Maple.
Yes.
Mr. Burgess.
Yes.
Ms. Maradi.
Yes.
Mr. Doran.
Yes.
Mrs. Hardy.
Yes.
Motion carried.
The next item on our agenda is Proposed Curriculum, Grades 6 through 12 CTE Architecture and Construction Curriculum. Administration provided a report to the school board on the curriculum materials proposed for Grades 6 through 12 CTE Architecture and Construction at the May 21st meeting. The curriculum is now before the board for adoption. The administration recommends the adoption of the curriculum as submitted. May I please have a motion?
Move to adopt the curriculum proposed for Grades 6 through 12 CTE Architecture and Construction as submitted. Second.
Is there any public testimony on this item? Seen none, public testimony is now closed. Is there any board discussion? Ms. Burnett.
I just wanted to say I really enjoy the CTE curriculum. I've dug through it all, and it's, it's great. Thank you to the Curriculum Committee. Thank you, Mr. Beam.
Seen no further board comments. A yes approves the curriculum, a no would send it back for reconsideration. Ms. Pollin, would you please call the vote?
Colonel Alvarado.
Yes.
Mr. Doran.
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett.
Yes.
Ms. Maple.
Yes.
Mr. Burgess.
Yes.
Ms. Maradi.
Yes.
Mrs. Hardy.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Our next item is the Proposed Curriculum for Grades 6 through 12 CTE STEM Curriculum. The administration provided a report to the school board on this curriculum proposed for the 6 through 12 CTE STEM at the May 21st meeting. The curriculum is now before the board for adoption, and the administration recommends the adoption of this curriculum as submitted. May I have a motion?
Move to adopt the curriculum proposed for Grades 6 through 12 CTE STEM as submitted. Second.
Is there any public testimony on this item? Seen none, public testimony is now closed. Is there any board discussion on this item? Seen none. A yes vote will approve this curriculum, and no vote would send it back for reconsideration. Ms. Pollin, would you please call the vote?
Colonel Alvarado.
Yes.
Ms. Maradi.
Yes.
Mr. Doran.
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett.
Yes.
Ms. Maple.
Yes.
Mr. Burgess.
Yes.
Mrs. Hardy.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Our next item on the curriculum is Proposed Materials, Grade K through 12 CTE, ELL, English, Music, Science, and World Language. The administration provided a report to the school board on the materials proposed for the Grades K-12 CTE. I know we're no longer using ELL, so Mr. Beam, would you remind me what the appropriate acronym is now?
Thank you so much for saying that. It is ML, Multilingual Learner.
All right. ML, English Science, or English Music, Science, World Language, and the 21st, at the May 21st meeting. The materials are now before the board for adoption, and the administration recommends the adoption of the materials as submitted. May I have a motion?
Move to adopt the materials proposed for Grades K through 12 CTE. Did you say ML? ML, English, Music, Science, and World Language as submitted.
Second.
Is there any public testimony on this item? Seen none, public testimony is now closed. Is there any board discussion on this item? Seen none, a yes vote will approve the curriculum, and no vote would send it back for reconsideration. Ms. Pollin, would you please call the vote?
Colonel Alvarado.
Yes.
Ms. Maradi.
Yes.
Mr. Doran.
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett.
Yes.
Ms. Maple.
Yes.
Mr. Burgess.
Yes.
Mrs. Hardy.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Our next item on the agenda is Resolution 2024-20, Safe and Secure Storage of Firearms. School Board Resolution 2024-20 recognizes the importance of safe and secure storage of firearms. May I have a motion?
Move to approve Resolution 2024-20, Safe and Secure Storage of Firearms.
Second.
Is there any public comment on this item? Seen none, public comment is now closed. Ms. Burnett, would you please read the resolution?
I read it. No, you read it. Fairbanks Star Borough Board of Education Resolution 2024-20, Safe and Secure Storage of Firearms. Whereas the safety and well-being of students and staff are of paramount importance. And whereas a national survey found that 57% of our youth are concerned that there will be a shooting in their school, and the percentage of our students who reported feeling safe at school substantially decreased between 2021 and 2022. And whereas, in Alaska, firearms are the leading cause of death for children and teens ages 0 to 19. An average of 20 children and teens ages 0 to 19 in Alaska die from firearms every year. And 1 in 10 Alaska adults live in a home with an unlocked and loaded firearm. And whereas, unsecured guns in the home pose a risk to our students beyond gun violence in schools. Every year, an average of 350 youth under the age of 18 unintentionally shoot themselves or someone else, amounting to approximately one unintentional shooting per day. Whereas, gun-involved suicide among our youth has reached the highest rate in more than 20 years. And in most child gun-involved suicides, the gun used belonged to someone in their home. Research shows that secure firearm storage practices are associated with an, with up to an 85% reduction in the risk of self-inflicted and unintentional firearm injuries among children and teens. Storing firearms securely protects any child in the home, as well as students throughout the school district and community. And whereas, the Fairbanks Star Borough School District was the first school district in Alaska to partner with the Be Smart campaign, and encourages responsible firearm ownership for risk mitigation by providing students and staff with a safe educational environment. And whereas, the Be Smart campaign was created to bring together all responsible adults to reduce suicides and the number of unintentional shootings that occur when children get a hold of unsecured firearms. And whereas, the Be Smart campaign encourages responsible firearm ownership and aims to reduce firearm deaths as a result of children assessing unsecured firearms and raises awareness about unintentional shootings by children and how to store firearms in the home securely. And whereas, parents and caretakers are encouraged to be smart by taking five simple steps to help prevent shootings by children. Secure all firearms in your home and vehicles. Model responsible behavior around firearms. Ask about the presence of unsecured firearms in other homes. Recognize the risks of teen suicide, and tell your peers to be smart. Now that, now, therefore, be it resolved, the Fairbanks Star Borough School District and Board of Education will continue partnering with the Be Smart campaign to help keep our schools safe by collaborating with and distributing the Be Smart Safe and Secure Firearms Storage information and resources to Fairbanks Star Borough students, staff, families, and community members.
We've been moving through this so quick. Just in case, is there any public comment on this item? I can't remember if I closed it or not. Seen none, there is, public comment is now closed. Now we are up for board discussion on this item. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Ms. Maradi.
Thank you. I just wanted to first thank the small committee that we had that did a lot of work on this resolution, those that attended the conference breakout session about it, and then further brought the work to the district to create this resolution. And then thanking the board for the support, and administration for your support, and getting this to the board for a vote tonight. It, it's unfortunate how needed this is. And I appreciate this board recognizing that it's not a political issue, it's a public health issue. And that is something that we can all agree on and support. And I look forward to continuing our work in the Be Smart campaign.
Mr. Doran.
I appreciate the, the focus on this is on safety, and that's the whole thing. It's about keeping our children safe, our community safe. And it is on safety. And I also want to recognize the U Park PTA who initiated some of this conversation years ago, and they began locally, but then they brought it to the district. And the, the fact that this is recognized as a continuing partnership across organizations and across the district, I really appreciate that being noted.
Mr. Burgess.
I just wanted to thank the members who worked on this and brought it forward. I think it's very important, and I agree, it's, it's a tragedy that it is so needed. But this is an informational piece about safety, about keeping students safe, and, and everyone frankly. And I'm very pleased to be able to vote in support of it.
Seen no further board discussion. I'll briefly put myself in the queue. I am also very grateful to the members who both went to the breakout session and then brought this forward to the board. I think it is unfortunately very needed, and the focus on safety, even if it just saves one life, that was enough. Ms. Pollin, would you please call the vote? And a yes vote will make this, the first time we pass this resolution, but it will come up again for future years, and no vote would return it back to be reconsidered.
Colonel Alvarado.
Yes.
Mr. Burgess.
Yes.
Ms. Maradi.
Yes.
Mr. Doran.
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett.
Yes.
Ms. Maple.
Yes.
Mrs. Hardy.
Yes.
Motion carried.
The next item on our agenda is to suspend Policy 264, Types of Meetings for the 2024-2025 School Board Regular Meeting Schedule Adjustment. Each spring, the school board sets a regular meeting calendar for the following school year. Regular meetings of the board generally take place on the first and third Tuesdays of most months when the school is in session. Historically, the school board has canceled the second December and first January meetings due to the close proximity to winter breaks. The administration recommends the board cancel the December 17th, 2024, and January 7th, 2025, regular meetings. The board always has the ability to call for additional regular meetings during the year if needed. May I have a motion?
Move to approve the Board's 2024-2025 Regular Meeting Calendar by suspending Policy 264, Types of Meetings to cancel the second regular meeting on December 17th, 2024, and January 7th, 2025, regular meetings due to their close proximity to winter break.
Second.
Is there any public testimony on this item? Seen none, public testimony is now closed. Is there any board discussion? Ms. Maradi.
First, I have a procedural question. If I, so I was speaking with board members from another district, and they mentioned that at least twice a year, they host their board meetings at a school instead of the admin center that they're associated with. And that gives the community and the board and administration a chance to be out in that school and in that community. And it has been mutually beneficial to the board, the district, and the community when, when they do so. I have spoken to administration, and they encouraged me to bring it to the board at this time. I'm not sure if it would be an amendment to this or just something that the board could consider. But I'd like But I'd like us to consider it is feasible for us to do that. It, it, it would take some, some effort, but it's not impossible. And it would, it is something that we could do. And I'm thinking rural schools or schools that often are, are missed.
To the administration?
Thank you, Ms. Marotti. And Ms. Marotti did bring this to me. And generally, I'm supportive of the idea. But I do want the board to know that the technology would not be the same if we traveled school to school. And so expectations from the board and from the community would need to adjust depending on our technology availability at that point in time. And so while I believe we would still be able to video zoom board meetings, it might not have this interactivity where we zoom in on me speaking right now. It might just be a general, you know, overview of the board. Microphones might certainly be different and, and things like that. But if the board is interested in that, I just wanted the board to be aware of. If we, you know, at the starting point, the tech might not be what it is in this room itself.
Mr. Doran?
I'm intrigued by the idea. And would like to, and, and also thinking in terms of what districts those are. The larger districts, like, I'm not sure whether those are involved or not. I know rural districts will do that. I'd leave it at, let's put it into the consideration. I, I'm thinking there are things to think about beyond the technology. It's also in terms of public testimony, making sure that that was done. I don't think that policy would disallow that as it currently stands. And the, the main focus here is on what our calendar is. But it does, it does provide some food for thought.
Ms. Burnett?
So you're proposing we take our board meetings on the road?
Through the chair, just one or two? Maybe start with one.
Intriguing.
Mr. Burgess?
Trying not to get too lost in thought here. But I, I, I appreciate that Ms. Marotti brought this forward. It is an intriguing idea. And I would certainly be open to exploring it more. And I, I would agree with Mr. Doran that, that maybe we don't need to make the decision tonight. But, but I do appreciate it being brought up and would very much like to continue that discussion.
Ms. Burnett?
I will agree with that. I, I absolutely want to have this discussion. But I don't think that that would prevent us also from approving this. So absolutely, I, I would like to have some time to think about that and then may bring it up again and consider it.
And I'll put myself in the queue. To the point Ms. Marotti just made, due to OMA things, it's hard for us to all hear new ideas. And so I, I really appreciate that you brought this up. I also appreciate it not being an amendment, so we don't have to vote on it. I also would like to explore that idea. And I, I think it definitely has merit and something that we should consider as we go forward. But I would hope that we just pass this clean as it is. Is there any further discussion on the current motion on the table? Seeing none, a yes vote will approve the board calendar with the changes. And then no vote would turn it back to reconsideration. Ms. Poland, could you please call the vote?
Colonel Alvarado?
Yes.
Ms. Maple?
Yes.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Ms. Marotti?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett?
Yes.
Mrs. Hardy?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Our next item on the agenda is our Fairbanks Principals Association, FPA, negotiated agreement. The negotiated agreement between the school or the Board of Education and the Fairbanks Principals Association, FPA, will expire on June 30th, 2024. The tentative agreement between the school board and FPA was reached on May 3rd, 2024 and was ratified by a vote of FPA members on May 16th, 2024. The three-year agreement will be effective July 30th, 2024 through June 30th, 2027. They have a motion.
Move to ratify the tentative agreement between the Fairbanks Principals Association and the Fairbanks North Starborough Board of Education for the period June 30th, 2024 through June 30th, 2026. 2027?
My copy says 2027. Can the administration?
Yeah.
2027.
Apologies. Yeah. June 30th, 2027. It's wrong in the.
Yep. It's wrong on the motion, so we've corrected it. It should say 2027 as far as the motion. That is okay. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
All right. Is there any public discussion on this item? Seeing none, public discussion is now closed. Is there any board comments or discussion on this item? Ms. Marotti?
Forgive me if I missed it, but could we get like a brief summary from administration on this?
Yes, definitely. Sorry.
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity. I was gonna hop in there and first off, just want to thank both negotiating teams. A lot of excellent dialogue went into this agreement on both sides. You know, negotiations are tough, especially in times of scarcity of resources. You know, what we offer in salary increases doesn't always reflect or actually never reflects the amount that our employees are worth. And so the, the major change in this contract is a salary increase over three years. 3% in the first year, 3% in the second year, and 1% in the third year. We did have a lot of conversations around coverage of activities. That was an area that principals were concerned with, given the large of, the large amount of activities that they are required to cover. And we agreed to continue that conversation and clarify that principals don't need to be at every event that's in the school. There are certainly events that teachers or advisors for certain activities can cover. And so we don't want our principals, you know, burning themselves out thinking that they have to be at every activity every night. So we'll continue that conversation with them. And then there were a few other minor changes in language that is reflected in the tentative agreement before you.
Is there any board questions or discussion? Mr. Doran?
One thing I noticed was in terms of the health benefits, could you just highlight some adjustments there?
I would turn to Ms. McDaniel's if she'd like to speak to that.
For the most part, it's current contract language. There's language in there for clarification or streamlining inefficiencies, but nothing has changed. So in terms of the health plan itself and the structure, that remains as it currently is.
Follow up and just clarification, when you say current language in the FPA negotiated agreement?
Yes, there's a memorandum of agreement from the last contract, so you're correct. So from the last memorandum of agreement, it's the same contract language. So it's the same plan that all the other bargaining groups have as well.
Thank you, and I just have a comment.
Go ahead, Mr. Doran.
I just want to say the appreciation for the principals in their work, not just in terms of negotiating an agreement, but their work on a day-to-day basis and their work with staff and students and families and community members. It's truly impressive. And as I've gone around to schools, the quality of our principals and their ability to talk about specifics within their classrooms, within their building, within their community. It just is a great testament to their professionalism. So I want to say thank you to them.
Not seeing any further comment, I will briefly put myself in the queue. I would also like to echo Mr. Doran's gratitude towards our principals and everything they do. And then also to the negotiation team and specifically Dr. Minor in his first year having settled all three of our bargaining contracts. I think that that speaks volumes. Very appreciative. A yes vote will ratify the contract and then no vote would send it back. We should not. Ms. Poland, would you please call the vote?
Colonel Alvarado?
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett?
No.
Ms. Maple?
Yes.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Ms. Marotti?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Mrs. Hardy?
Yes.
Motion carried.
And that.
Move to suspend the rules to go past nine o'clock?
Second.
And now we are on information and reports. Alaska Reads Act Report. Executive Director of Teaching and Learning, Chain Beam, and Assistant Superintendent Kate LaPlante will provide information and an update on Alaska Reads Act.
Thank you. We're just waiting for the slides to come up here so we can all see what we're talking about. So as it has been all year, it's my great pleasure to start off our report by introducing myself, Kate LaPlante, Assistant Superintendent of Elementary Schools, and my partner Chain Beam, the Executive Director of Teaching and Learning. And we've worked closely this year and previous years to set our district up for, I believe, some real successful outcomes. We're, I, I just really couldn't be more excited to share what we have to share with you tonight and to highlight the work of our educators and the incredible progress that we see from our students. So I'm, I'm very excited about that. I always like to try to reflect back to our strategic plan and the ways that the work that we're doing is directly related to our strategic plan. And since we're going to be looking at our strategic plan, I think it's helpful to note that we do use that as a guiding document. And in our current strategic plan, we identify that academic success and life success are two important goals. And I would say that reading is foundational to both of those. And that we have been seeing our students be more prepared for other academic success because they can read. We've actually seen some bumps in our math scores already when we've really only been focusing on reading. But when students can read, they do better in all areas. Part of the foundation that we provided for this was, started in 2022 when Chain and I started thinking about how were we going to set up our district to have a state and district-wide reading initiative that really felt like a grassroots movement. We didn't want this to be something that was done to our educators, but done with our educators and included their voices at all levels and included communication flowing appropriately and necessarily so that decisions could be informed by people that were going to be doing that work in the classrooms. And so this organizational structure was designed with that in mind. And it was also designed with the thought that it could be used for other initiatives in the future. So we could use the same design, even the same concept of the IDEA team, which actually stands for Identify, Data, Educate, and Act. So we could use that for math, we could use that for science or anything else. And I, I think it's been very successful. And there's been a lot of include, information included and people's voices heard.
So we wanted to kind of just point out a few things that this team has done this year because the teachers have done a tremendous job on this team. We've talked about RAP plans before. We talked about that almost every time that, that we've sat down. We've talked about RAP plans. They are the ones that helped come up with that structure. They are required by the state, by the AK, I'm sorry, by AK Reads Act. And we put it together in a way that it was tolerable for the teachers. I think I remember telling you all the first, first time that, that, that the, the structure that was given to us by the state was pages and pages long. And it, and, and people would have just been so angry. So they did a great job on that. And this year, there were 2,176 RAP plans given to students this year. That's, that's quite an accomplishment for our teachers. 200, I'm sorry, 2,176 individual plans to help kids become better readers. So that's a great thing. And then for the kids who, at the end of the year, maybe needed to have, to have conversations about retention, they came up with some guidance for that conversation. That's not a easy, that's, that's not an easy conversation to have. So they did that. They also included some inter-reading videos. They're working on that. And that'll, that'll come through next year. Another thing that has some videos this year, this is a document that went out to teachers. And this helped us with the different methods and cues and routines to teach reading. So what happens is, and just, you'll notice probably as we go further, I flip-flop a few slides here and there, but, but the justice is the same. So what happens here is this document shows teachers exactly how to do certain routines. That when, when they're teaching this specific thing, this is a way to do it. And this is something that our teachers, I think, really were waiting for because we've been saying that we need to teach reading better. But the hows of that is not easy. If you talk to elementary teachers, even K-1 teachers, they will tell you that when they were in college, no one ever taught them how to teach reading. And that sounds like such a bizarre thing, but that's true. And, and we hear it over and over and over again. So we had to, you know, really work hard so our teachers can know how to teach reading. This is one of the ways. We had PD for this in March. And every, I won't say every K-5 teacher, but the vast majority of K-5 teachers were, were in this room and had three and a half hours of training on how to do these. Then we went, and if you look at the links on there, those, those blue parts, that those are links, that you could click on them and watch actual videos of our teachers modeling how to do those routines. So this IDEA team did a tremendous job on that. This was a year-long process, and this is something that I'm super proud of.
Are you open to questions?
Yeah, absolutely.
Ms. Marotti? And then I'll put myself. Oh, you look like you had a finger. Okay. So I'll just put myself in the queue real quick. Is there a place where the general public could access this document? As a teacher, I'm like, already could tell it was great. And I would love myself, I think as a parent too, if you've got young kids understanding what they're doing in class.
Currently, it's not, but we can probably make that happen. We could put it on the website and just where people can, can click on the links and they can, they can even, you know, I, I think what you're, what you're seeing is watch it and then do it at home.
Yes.
And what's great about this, what we're super excited about it is when, if, if kids transfer schools, the routines could be the same. When they go on their walk to intervention, every teacher in the school could be doing the same. So if they're practicing it, they're not confused by, well, one teacher does it this way and one teacher does it this way. It's very consistent. So we're hoping that teachers really, really follow this. Another thing that I'm super excited about is later, late last year, early this year, the state put this out. And Dr. Minor had asked us and he said, hey, that'd be great if we had our own version of that. So we are probably 95% done. It's not ready for public yet, but we do have our own version of a literacy blueprint as far as how do we address things in our district? So that'll be ready. I wanted to have it ready for you guys this time, but there are a couple little tweaks that we want to make sure that are just, just perfect before we get it to you. And we'll get it to you next fall.
Could you possibly add like a QR code that would link to that document?
So that. When it's ready, we can absolutely do that. Yes.
Like even the one that you just showed, so that it's embedded in there when you talk about teaching styles and went to that hyperlink document? That would be amazing and then it would all be in one place.
Yes.
I'll explain off-book sometime.
Okay.
I'm loving this. Thank you.
Just, just, just so you know that we're not ready for this to go out yet.
Yep.
Okay.
That's what I was like.
That's fine.
Give you recommendations.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so last year or this current year that we're finishing up, we had additional data days that were added to the calendar. Those were days that we asked for at the beginning of the year. I think there was one full day with a half day or an early-out day. And then throughout the year, there were three additional early dismissal days. And those were used by the schools specifically timed to be able to look at M-class and MAP data and rearrange any walk-to-intervention groups and look at the, you know, what interventions students needed. And those were very, very well utilized. And we are very happy to have those available again next year and into the future. We're going to continue to place those strategically so that we always have the newest data that the teachers are working with. And we'll talk about it another time, but, or a little bit later. But we also have data walls that are beginning to be put up in many schools. And while we have data on, in spreadsheets and in lots of documents, the impact of having a data wall is quite impressive. And so when teachers can have their PLCs in that room or the entire staff can be having a meeting or the, you know, a tighter, you know, grade bands can be meeting in there, and it really has a great impact. And the principals have probably laughed at me several times because I literally cried in a couple different data rooms.
So we'll take a look at some MAP data. This is MAP data from the fall. You've already seen it. But I do want to point out in the top right-hand corner that little pie chart because we're going to come back to that. And then the next slide is the MAP winter. I've already shown you that in a previous meeting also. And then here is MAP spring. Essentially, I put those three slides in for you all to, so you can see that data, but I didn't want to talk a lot about it in this setting. However, what I want to talk about is the next slide, which shows our MAP data that changes from fall to spring. If we note back on the way MAP calls it in that deep red, they call that needs support. And then you can see yellow, green, and blue across the way. So proficient and advanced. If we look at comparing fall to spring, what we can notice here is the blue, advanced, increased by 2%. And this is three, three through nine. Proficient decreased about 1.1%, which is basically flat. Yellow approaching decreased by 1.3%. And needs support decreased by 3.2%. So when you're looking at kids this age, third grade through ninth grade, you all who have that kind of a teaching background, you know it's hard to make big chunks of change at a time. Reducing that needs support by, I'm sorry, by 3.2%, that's a pretty significant change for us. So we're super happy about that. If we, so I've put this in here and then this, you can see that this is third through ninth and it shows fall, winter, and spring benchmark. I'm going to, I'm going to cut this in half and make it bigger so you can see it on the next slide. So here's grades three through five. And you can see what we want is we want, as fall, winter, and spring pass, we want the green and the blue to get bigger. And you can see what we really want is those lines to go from, like, from, let's say, northwest down, I'm sorry, northeast down to southwest, kind of in that direction. And we see that's working really well in third and fourth. Fifth grade did not go in the direction that we would want on that. We've, we've been having some conversations about why that might be. But fifth and sixth grade both were not exactly where we wanted. Third grade was great. Fourth grade was really good also. Speaking of third grade, I did want to point this out. So this is third grade. And the reason that we want to talk about third grade is because third grade is that hinge point for so much. We know that third grade kids have to take two assessments, the M-class, which dictates some things, and then MAP here. So this is the MAP data. And we can see that for third graders, their needs support decreased 9.8% from fall to spring. That's a significant movement for those third grade kids. The yellow went up 2.4% approaching. Proficient up 9.2%. That's excellent. And advanced went down 1.7%. The one beneath that is counting spring to spring. So now those are different kids, but we're still measuring our third graders one way or another. And you can see how that train changed. Needs support went down 8.7%. Again, a big, significant change. I'm really pleased with the work that our third grade teachers did this year. They had a big lift. All of our K-5 teachers had a lift, had a big lift. Our third grade teachers had a very big lift. And you can see that they did a great job and we had some really nice data to go along with that. If we move on to secondary, we can see that seventh, eighth, and ninth, they had some really nice movement that we wanted. Sixth grade, as I said before, and if you remember back to the, when we just did fall and winter, we had that same issue. So there's something going on in fifth and sixth grade that we need to kind of dig into and find out what that is. I could make some guesses. And for sixth grade, I'm going to guess that it's middle school and it's different. And it's just like the whole scenario. It was kind of different for them for that first year. And for fifth grade, we were talking about earlier, and there could be some things. And I hate going back to this, but that group was in first and second grade when COVID hit. So they missed a lot of that basics. And they're just not bouncing back quite as well as like our fourth graders are for some reason. But that's something that I think we kind of need to get into. While we're talking about some older kids, I'm super, I'm not going to go too much into this, but I did want to take a few seconds to talk about some secondary data. We're also happy with most of that data. You can see here that we have two middle schools who we can see how well they are doing. If you look on the bottom right, we're talking about Lexile scores. For those of you that are not really reading teachers, Lexile scores are basically how, that's one way that we can measure reading. And you can see kind of what the grade level is and what the Lexile band would be typically. And you can see on the graph is that our kids did make some real growth. Now, what we have is two things going on in our middle schools. One is the Walk to Read program. And I, not all our middle schools, but I think all but one has fully put it in and one is just about to start it up. And we have a class also, a specific reading class that is new to our school district. We never had a specific reading class for secondary, at least not in the recent past, we have not. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail on that because I know we have some ladies from Ryan here and I'm not going to steal their thunder because they have some great thunder that they can show you when it's their turn. And my last thing I want to show you before I turn it back is, here's a big data wall. Kate mentioned data walls earlier. This is from one of our elementary schools. And what we can see here is from left to right, it's kind of kindergarten for a second all the way up through fifth grade. And what, the power of this is to put this, and this is a private room, so kids don't go in there, and it has their reading data. And what happens is they kind of put these little cards in the green or the yellow or the red in the fall. And then when kids come back later and they can see the movement, then they move those cards in, you know, from the red to the yellow or from the yellow to the green or whatever it is. And just like Kate said, it's one thing to see it on a spreadsheet, but to see like icons that represent kids making that jump is a really powerful thing. And many, many of our K-5 schools have these in place right now. So this is a great way to kind of make sure that they're having great conversations about data.
So I'll talk about it a little bit more later, but Chain and I had the great pleasure of visiting many, many schools the last week of school. And even on the very last day of school, we were visiting teachers and they were in the data room having like an end-of-the-year meeting right there with their data. And so they are excited. I would say that the teachers are excited and I'll talk about students being excited as well. You can also view this data for yourself on our updated data dashboard that Ellis Ott has updated. And this one here shows the fall, winter, and spring for all the grade bands that take M-class. So that's kindergarten, first, second, and third grade. And so in the fall, you can see that we had 43 or 40% in the orange or the well-below benchmark and 19 in the below benchmark. And so again, we are trying to shrink the yellow and orange and increase the green and blue in concept. And you can see just by some simple math, if you combine the green and the blue in each category or in each, you know, fall, winter, and spring, and then do the quick mental math between spring and fall, we increased by 23.3% the number of students who moved out of below or far below proficient and into proficient or well above proficient. And that is a significant number of students who are now on grade level for reading at the end of this year. So we know that once a student is at grade level for reading, they're more likely to stay at grade level for reading. So that is really impressive growth for our district. To break that down further, you can see here, yeah, go ahead. You can see on the next slide, again, it's fall, winter, and spring. But now you can see each grade level, the kindergarten, first, second, and third. And then you can drop down and see that again in the winter and then again in the spring. So you see that every grade level has made growth. And this is true for every school in our district. We saw growth at every grade level at every school. So I think that there's a lot to unpack here. One of the things that we want to think about is, why is this happening, right? What can we attribute this to? And so I think it's important to recognize some of the things that we're doing differently and better than we have in the past. Right now, we have new curriculum. We have new core materials. We have new intervention materials. I will say Ufly, as I was touring schools and visiting them during their walk-to-interventions, I talked to people about, you know, what they were using and how they felt about it. And I heard multiple times, Ufly is a game changer. It's not very heavily reliant on technology. There's some technology, but it can be easily used and implemented with great success and fidelity by tutors, by teachers, by, you know, PE teachers that are part of the walk-to-intervention. So doing that and I think also doing these things across the entire system. So we're not saying like, well, why is this school having success and this other school's not? We're seeing success across this whole system and we're all using the same materials. And that is sometimes a unique thing for our district. So I would say that everything that we have here is part of it. We, I asked one principal, you know, what, to what do you, you know, attribute this to? And I think the answer was everything. And I think that's true. It is everything, but it's everything working together, including our teachers working together.
So to expand on the idea of our teachers working together, there's, I'm going to get a little teachery for about three minutes here on this. So John Hattie is kind of like the name in education right now. He's done a lot of stuff and he's been that way for a while. Basically, what he does is he does studies on studies. And he puts research together. So he has done, he has done eight, those are called meta-studies. He's done 800 of those meta-studies, which means he's looked at over 50,000 studies and combined what they have looked at. They, it's, and it's included 80 million students. So it's like studies after study after study. And what he does is he looks at this thing called effect size. And effect size is basically how well something works. And the effect could be something that the kid is doing, something that the teacher is doing, something that's going on at home. So it's like anything that goes on with students or schools. And what he's done is he has now 212, I think, effect sizes that he measures against each other to say, here's something that works better than something else. Or not just what works, but has an impact. Because it's not always a thing that a teacher does. So for example, you can see very far on the right that those are negative numbers that, like boredom. If kids are bored, that has like a negative effect. Another one that's not on there is if kids transfer schools, that has a negative effect. But the midpoint is that point four. And you can see that right, kind of right at the top. And anything above point four has greater-than-average impact. Anything below point four has less than. And if you look, it's between point four and then all the way to the right is 1.6. And 1.6 is the greatest one. Like that's the, that's the highest thing that he has found in his studies. And that's called collective teacher efficacy. And what that means is teachers know that what they're doing has a positive impact. When teachers, as an individual, says, I know when I walk into a room, I can make a difference for the kids who I stand in front of, who I work with, I know that. Now, I'll tell you, not every teacher feels that way. But the teachers who feel that way, it works because they've had the evidence to back them up and now they feel it. And they can walk in any room and say, I can make a difference in this room. That's great. But when it's collective and you have many teachers working together on something and they can see that positive impact, that's, that's the biggest effect size that John Hattie has found. For our teachers, we have made the first step on collective teacher efficacy. I have talked to principals, you have talked to principals. We hear from teachers that they say, oh, what we're doing is working. We can see it working. It's not what I'm doing, it's what we're doing together. So I wanted to kind of talk about that for a second because I think that is a powerful step for us this year. Is that not just, yeah, we're doing random things here and there, is that we're putting together a plan. People are doing the plan. They're seeing data and they're feeling I can make a difference and we, as a team, are making a difference. So I wanted to kind of talk about that for a minute. Now, we wanted to also mention summer school. We know that according to the AK Reads Act is that third graders who are still well below, according to M-class, should be going to 20 hours of summer school for reading in order to move on to fourth grade. So we have 213 students that are eligible for this, for this. We have two sites. It started yesterday. It runs through June. Students only need 20 hours. So what we have is we have four sessions. And so one this week, another session next week, et cetera, et cetera. It runs Monday through Thursday. We're at Hunter and Midnight Sun. Each site has two classrooms, two sort of high teachers and two teacher assistants to help run this program. Families can choose one week and then whatever site that they want to go to and we make that happen for them. The structure, which we'll talk about in a minute, was created by our team of teachers, which I'm super happy about. And for us right now, it was funded by, for one year. Currently, we have 121 of our slots filled. We have open slots and we're trying to fill them because not every family is responding to the emails when we reach out to them. Because we've reached out to them twice. Since not all families are reaching back, the families that are, if they want to come in for two weeks, we're offering that they could come in for extra time so we can fill those slots also. The way the day looks is that they spend some time at some small, small group stations and they do different skill set type things. They do that throughout the day, throughout the morning. And then, because we don't want to do just drill, drill, drill all the time, we want to make it, because it's somebody want to do some kind of fun things, is that we have some vocab building projects, strategies that they can work on. And the teachers can kind of choose what those look like. And we have, I mean, we're just saying, go and try to make some things fun for the kids so they can build their vocabulary. This is, next one is a slide that you guys don't have because it happened yesterday and today. So this was part of that vocabulary, vocab activity. The ones on the left, that was yesterday. The ones on the left, that was yesterday, one of our sites did a vocab slash STEAM activity, where they learned from new words like floor plans, architect, architecture, and then built these, and then they'll use that to kind of learn some vocabulary. The one on the right is what they did today. Those words were prediction, vertical, horizontal. You can see them also working with tallies and charts and graphs and kind of things like that. So those things happened today, and we're really happy with the way summer school is going so far.
And so, and part of what we were doing with the summer school also is that these are third graders that are going to go into fourth grade. And so a lot of what they're, I think what they're pulling from is the beginning of the year, fourth grade materials, so that we are front-loading them with vocabulary that they will see in the first quarter of fourth grade. So they'll feel, they'll enter fourth grade feeling prepared, like, oh, I know that. So that's part of what we're doing there. At the end of the year, last year, at the end of the year, Chain and I visited many schools to talk to staff and explain and demystify and calm down worries about the Alaska Reads Act and the work that was going to be required, and how our district was going to support teachers and schools through that work. So then we did all those things, the IDEA team did their amazing work. We've been providing professional development and really doing that work that we had talked about, and I think have provided a lot of support. But we know that we were asking a lot of teachers and our schools to step up in new ways. So we, Chain and I, wanted to go back to the schools and say thank you, and show them their data. So each school got a poster that had their specific data, celebrating the growth that they were making. We highlighted our district's growth, and we really wanted to highlight, again, that teacher efficacy, and that what we're doing as a district is having a positive effect. So we went back and visited all the schools and thanked the teachers, went into classrooms, in some classrooms we were in, we literally walked in, and the teacher, the students were looking at their data. They had their folders open, and they were going over their growth data. And, you know, we said, are you guys looking at your reading data? We are so impressed by this. We're coming to say thank you to your teachers. And they were coming up to Chain and I and showing us their folders and identifying their growth, and saying, I grew this many points, and I was, I was below, I was like at a second grade, and now I'm at a fourth grade. And they knew how much they had grown. And so the students are quite motivated by the idea that they can learn how to read, and they can see their own growth. So it was very exciting, and I just, it was a wonderful thing for us to do. It was, I think, very exciting for us, and I, we, our heart is really, has a lot of gratitude for what our educators did this year. And I think we have a lot of ideas about how we can continue this strong focus and not lose any momentum with it. So with that, I would just say, thank you to Chain for being my partner with this. That's been a great pleasure to me, and the work that you've done with the IDEA team and with your teaching and learning department, you've carried a big load, so thank you. And thank you to the board for supporting this work and giving us the room that we needed to make these things happen. And we're happy to take questions.
Mr. Doran, then Ms. Burnett, Ms. Marotti, and then Ms. Maple.
Couple of observations, and I had two quick questions. One, when you talked about the data walls, and I know they've been around the district in various ways for 25 years or more, but going around this year, the number, when I mentioned principals earlier, the number of times we were able to go look at a data wall, and they could brag on what their teachers and students were doing, it's great. And UFLY often came up, and I was glad to see some of it, and where I could see it going on, and, but good comments whether they were doing it at that time or elsewhere. Really want to say thank you for the achievement. It's very hopeful, very promising, and does reflect a tremendous amount of work on part of everybody, and the supports also from central office to the schools for this. Two quick questions I had is one idea, what does the acronym stand for?
Let me go, let me go back to that slide. I had the notes, and then I skipped off of it. It stands for Investigate, Data, Educate and Act. Because we thought that that team would do investigation, they would read articles, they would, you know, look at the materials, they would look at data, they would figure out how to educate others on things and become educated, and then they would act. They would help us decide on how to act. And so we thought that that both had a nice acronym, but also, you know, has a nice ring to it as far as IDEA team. And again, we didn't want it to be literacy specific, because we were trying to design a, sort of a structural model that could be used by our district for the next initiative. And I say initiative proudly, because I think that that's exactly what this is, is an initiative in which we are learning new skills, gaining new knowledge, that we will, it will become part of how we do our district's work. And once we have that well-established, it won't have to be an initiative to keep going forward. And then we will have the brain space as a district to have the next initiative to do that similar thing.
If I might, I just have one other question. So my second question was in terms of group sizes, and it may not be all unanswered tonight, it might be broader administrative through the chair. I know people have struggled with group sizes. You talk about those, getting them down for the summer school, but we have the real range and challenge of group size, trying to make smaller groups in title and non-title schools. And maybe at some point, we could get, you know, unless you have something to share immediately tonight, but some better information on understanding those groups. And then when it comes to us, to the board, and depending upon what happens with funding, there may be some specific funding for K3 title and non-title schools, how that would impact to try and, what we want, need to be considering budget-wise for supporting those group sizes. So if you had something in general now, but I think a lot of it is later.
So definitely group sizes vary. We know that we got feedback from the state that they thought that our group sizes were larger than what they had hoped to see across the state. And I think we respectfully replied back that there wasn't enough funding to do much more than that, and that with more funding, we would absolutely try to make group sizes be smaller. So yes, depending on the way that schools structured their walk to intervention, who they were able to bring into that, there was different abilities at different schools to make smaller sizes. There was always an effort to have our most struggling students with our most skilled and knowledgeable and experienced teachers, and have our higher-performing readers with, in larger settings, with folks that could lead literacy circles and book studies and things like that, and enrichment, but weren't expected to be teaching, you know, the foundational reading skills. So I would say, you know, group sizes ranged anywhere from three to 20, you know, and depending on the school. And as far as funding, you know, we are in talks of, okay.
I'll take that part.
Okay.
In terms of funding, I'd caution the board, you know, depending on what the governor signs, we're looking at potentially around $800,000 for Reads Act funding. One of the big things that we've talked about over the course of the year is that mandate that we do provide outside of school and summer tutoring services to students that are not proficient. And so a large chunk of that funding would go to that, or I would suggest the board allocate that to that, given that's a part of the Reads Act, and that's something that we need to accomplish. And so you can see that $800,000 gets sucked up pretty quickly, and might not lead to those smaller group sizes right away, but certainly smaller group sizes outside of school and during the summer months. And then, you know, as you layer on the additional borough funding, while they didn't give us enough funding to potentially restore all class sizes, that might be something that the board looks at, at a K3 level, that reducing class sizes K3 gets at those smaller group sizes as well. So something for the board to consider in the meantime, while we wait for the governor to examine the budget, and then hopefully sign off on the increased funding for our school district.
Hey, want to say thank you for those perspectives. That does help give us some forethought.
Ms. Burnett.
Thank you. Not a question, just more of a statement. I remember the day that you guys were coming back from doing this. I just left a meeting with Mr. DeGraw and ran into you guys downstairs, and I just remember the looks on your faces, and especially you, Chain, because you're just so stoic all the time, but the smile that you guys had, I just, I could feel it, and it's just really awesome to see the progress that our students are making. And I really truly do look forward to the work next year and seeing more progress, and it's just awesome. So thank you guys so much for doing so good at this and taking care of our students.
Thank you.
Ms. Marotti.
I just want to echo the same gratitude. I just told Dr. Myers, I've never seen them so excited and passionate. And it's not that you aren't, but I can see the excitement behind you today, and I'm so grateful for all of the hard work. I told the whole board and Dr. Minor, you know, I was very skeptical at the beginning, not of like our ability, but how we were going to walk such a huge thing out. And you have proved, well, all of you have proved, every step of the way that A, it was possible, B, that we can do it, and C, that our students are incredible and our educators are incredible. I really hope that this, there's a slide in here that shows, like, it's in the thank you, right before the thank you slide, second to last slide. I hope we can just integrate that into our legislative advocacy next year, or something like that, maybe different. But to show them that the targeted approach and the little bit of funding that they gave us, and the increased funding this year, hopefully is working, and that they should increase it and continue it. Thank you for all your hard work, not only to impact our district, but it could really help our state as a whole when it comes to advocacy.
Thank you.
Ms. Maple.
Thank you. Just kudos, like, well done. I'm very proud of the work that you've done, and in collaboration with principals and teachers. Thank you to everybody, and of course, support staff. Thank you to everybody that was involved in all of this. Really phenomenal work. I did have a question, and I'm asking this with that slide, with John Hattie's information on it. I think he said 213 students were eligible for third grade summer school, and there's somewhere around 90 that haven't signed up yet, 90-something?
Yeah, probably, I don't know the exact number, but, yes.
So are the students that do not, those students who do not participate in summer school, are they going to be retained because of the Alaska Reads Act requirements?
No, I'm going to say a little bit, and then I'll let Kate take over, but, but no, we're not going to make anyone stay back. In the end, it's going to be a parent choice. So we, so it's our duty, we are required to offer these 20 hours, we're offering it. Many families take advantage, not all do. So we are, we're not, just because someone chooses to not do the 20 hours, we are not saying, well, then you have to stay back. That is not where we're going with it.
And we're offering other resources. And we are also offering some other resources, so if they can't participate because they're traveling or something like that, they can use some of the online resources. We have some varsity tutoring spots that are available. So they have some other options that maybe aren't, you know, in person, but they do have it. And retention, you know, we did have the conversations with families this spring about retention, and we had 42 students that were, that their parents decided, their family decided that they wanted them retained. That was nine kindergarteners, seven first graders, five second graders, and 21 third graders. Now, some of those students might have been considered for retention by their families, even without the reading, but definitely having this conversation, I think, was part of their decision-making. We will have to wait and see a little bit how that all works out for those students, but we absolutely are supporting the families in that decision. And, you know, we would not retain a student, you know, if a student signed up and they came for four hours, and then there was a family emergency, we wouldn't say, well, you missed the other 16 hours, so now you have to stay back. It's definitely going to be the family's decision.
Okay, I just, if I can follow up, just with a comment, I just really appreciate that you anticipated the question and had numbers ready. And, yeah, just wanted to also clarify, because I didn't earlier, that that retention is listed on this slide as a...
I was about to ask, is that, was that the impetus to this comment? Yes. Retention, you could see there, studies nationwide show that retention actually has a negative effect. And that's studies after study after study after study.
Thank you.
I'll put myself in the queue. I will say, as someone who was retained, it had a positive effect in my life, so, you know, anecdotal evidence. First, thank you so much for the work that your team and the IDEA team and everyone put into walking this out and providing our educators with the resources they need to implement, the Alaska Reads Act. I am so excited that it has been such a positive force, even in my own family's life. I have a second grader, so very much involved in this process. And I was, like Ms. Marotti, skeptical at first, and he had a RAP plan at the beginning of the year, and he no longer has one. And the growth that I have seen, especially being dyslexic myself and thinking that my son is probably there, the science of reading, I can already tell he has phonemic awareness skills that I didn't have. And it took me so long to get there, and I'm so grateful that we're offering this to students, and also to the parental choice crowd that we are. It is parental choice for retention, it is, we are partnering with our families. And I think that is so important. So gratitude to everyone all around. I think that's it. Thank you again so much.
Thank you so much.
The next item, or do we need a break? I think we're going to take a five-minute break, if our guests don't mind, and then we will come right back. So a five-minute recess. We are back from recess. The time is now 9:49. The next item on our agenda is the Ryan Middle School Walk to Read report. Heather Stewart, principal, and Kelly Scallion, instructional coach, represent an overview of Ryan's Tier One Reading Intervention Walk to Read effort. We also have Ms. Allison Curry.
So, thank you for having us. Kelly and I are going to keep our statement short because the bulk of what we're doing is in Allison's part of the presentation. So, we changed the title a little bit to Ryan's Reading Journey. We've been on this journey for over three years now. We started back in 2021 when we were looking at our data, and so we knew that our students weren't reading, and especially coming back from COVID, you know? And so, we decided that at the middle school is kind of a sweet spot. I have probably half of my teachers who are elementary, who've moved into secondary, and then the other half of them are secondary-trained. And we decided to use the Walk to Read label because our kids coming to us were familiar with that because for long, for years and years and years, elementary schools have been doing walk-to types of intervention. So, we thought, "Walk to Read, the kids know what that is, we can, we can work with that." And so, one of the things that we looked at is, when we started talking about this, getting staff buy-in, because it became a whole-school endeavor. Every teacher in my building, every tutor, support staff, worked on teaching a Walk to Read group. We paired up some of our tutors with teachers so that they could even break off small groups. And then we looked at where, what professional development did we need to provide for our teachers? And fortunately, the district had Rhonda Harvey, who was running a reading grant, and she came in and did a lot of side-by-side training with me and the staff, with Kelly and the staff, with putting together Walk to Read lessons. And so, teachers really, at the middle school level, could walk in, go to their group. So, if I'm a Group Three teacher, roughly third-grade level, I could go in there, and I have, every week, there's a lesson for me to teach where I can plug and go. And similar to what Kate talked about and Chain and theirs, we took our teachers who were the most skilled and put them with our students who had the biggest deficits. And then, we were very intentional about making those classes very small, and then our students who are on or above grade level, we put them into bigger classes. And so, that professional development was key. And so, then I also had to get my math teachers, MIP teachers, to buy into this. And so, we did that through reading across the curriculum and with a focus on vocabulary development. So, those were the targeted areas that we looked at when we started this journey three years ago. Let me see, make sure I got my notes. And so, then the next thing was, so we started with the professional development, and we started with collecting our data. There really isn't a whole lot of curriculum out there or interventions for secondary students. So, again, we had to look at what we had available and how we could use that to best meet the needs of our students. And then, the big trick at secondary is getting it to fit into the master schedule, because typically, kids have, at Ryan, they have an advisory class, and then they have six classes. So, how do you fit this intervention into that rotating schedule? So, that took a couple of years, and we, we found things that worked and didn't work, and Kelly's going to talk a little bit about that part of the journey. And then, we're going to turn it over to Allison to talk about the success she's seeing in her Foundations class.
Yeah. And so, I know that you guys have this paper in your board packet. This is just a summary of our reading intervention. So, when we first started, we were trying to figure out what scales we wanted to make sure we taught, and we looked at fluency, word entomology, comprehension, strategies, and academic, grade-specific vocabulary. We looked at all the data that we had. So, we started out with looking at map data. We did some eye-ready. We then went on to using individual assessments. So, Rhonda and myself and the English teachers assessed about 500 kids in the whole school that first year. And so, that was pulling them out of class, having them read, so we could calculate words per minute. We could calculate what grade-level band they basically were in for their reading. And that was the biggest eye-opener and the biggest staff buy-in, because when teachers could hear the students actually reading, and they realized, "Wow, we do have a big problem that we need to address with many of the students." So, we took a lot of teacher input, and our rooms looked sort of like the data wall that you saw in the last slides, where we just had kids' names and Lexile levels and everything just all over the place. And that first year that we did it, the actual Walk to Read program maybe lasted about two months, because we spent the whole year doing the assessments, getting everything ready, and then letting teachers pick their groups and just kind of figuring out how it was going to work. The second year, we had our sixth graders join us. And so, we had data for the seventh graders, or the seventh graders were new and the sixth graders. So, we ended up, we had the eighth graders get started right away. We finally put the classes into Power School, and that was a big help. And we decided they were going to meet three times a week for 45-minute sessions, and they met in the middle of the day around lunchtime. And that provided some successes, but then also, it showed us some things that we needed to fail forward with. Ongoing professional development in that, in that next year. And what the second year of Walk to Read, the Phase Two, really showed us was that we absolutely had to have a Foundations of Reading class the following year, because we were seeing that level of deficit among students that did not have IEPs. We also added a four-week summer program last summer that focused on improving reading and math skills. We had the second year helped with student buy-in, because we had a Walk to Read store that we got input, we got donations from all over the community for that, and it was really fun, but not sustainable. Then, this past year, we had right about 500 kids, just under 500. We placed our Walk to Read class on the master schedule, so it was 45 minutes on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, right after our morning advisory class. We were so fortunate to have Rhonda centralize our Walk to Read curriculum for every single groups. Our groups ranged from first through eighth grade, basically. And she centralized that curriculum on a Google Classroom, so that even new teachers that really weren't very familiar with the program could come in and have a slideshow for every single day of the class. And so, that was really, really helpful. We also, the centralized curriculum and ongoing staff training helped us really cement this as part of our culture at Ryan, so much so that when we had our fifth graders coming to visit this past year, or this past spring, we heard the tour guides telling them. And then, right after advisory, we have Walk to Read, and you guys know what that is, because you have it at your school. And so, it's now just a given that we're going to be having reading interventions. And we have everything from grade level, like I said, to about first grade. Our grade-level groups are large. They are maybe 30 students, depends, some are a little bit bigger. And then, we have all the way down to our one and two levels, might have somewhere around like 10 or 12 kids. So, it just kind of varies. But we do see a lot of kids kind of stuck in that fifth, sixth grade, and Allison will have some graphs that kind of show where that hole is that we've noticed in the fifth, sixth grade and what we need to fill in. But that shift in culture is the biggest part that we've seen. And then, I'll turn it over to Allison, because she's got a lot of background and more. Oh, yes.
Yeah. And so, with this, getting staff buy-in, and I'm really fortunate, the Ryan staff go with whatever crazy idea I come up or I come back from a conference with. "All right, guys, we're going to try this," and they look at me and they're like, "Oh, no, not again." But they did an amazing job with this, right? Because in order to have Kelly's group be 12 kids, that means I got to take on 20 kids. And so, their willingness to do that has been instrumental in this, and we wouldn't have been able to get it up and off the ground as quickly as we did without Rhonda's support. And it's really cold in here. I'm just saying. So, yeah. So, I just wanted to put a shout-out to my staff for making, for taking this crazy journey with us. And our motto the first year and a half was, "By providing extra reading to kids, we couldn't do any harm." So, we weren't, even if you were never a reading teacher and you couldn't do anything, you know, you didn't know how to teach reading, you weren't going to hurt the kids that were in your group by reading a book with them. So...
Before we switch, do you have any questions just about the Tier One Walk to Read general program that we have at Ryan before we move on?
You guys are so good. Do you want to switch places?
And the slideshow you have was our presentation at the ESEA Title I Conference. So, it has, it's the 90-minute version.
It's, yeah. It's the steroids version, right? Okay. Well, hello, everyone. Hello, team. I'm so happy to be here. Finally, I've been dreaming about this day all school year, because I finally get to tell my story and tell the story of Foundations of Reading. So, this time last year, we pitched a proposal to Teaching and Learning and asked if we, pretty please, could we pretty please have a class called Foundations of Reading, and could I teach it? And could we try to find some sixth graders that are doing really well at reading, and could we help them? And luckily, they said yes. And so, we did it. And now, we are at the end, and you get to hear the whole story. So, of course, all the kids at Ryan, very special to us, and we know that whatever they do, when they leave Ryan at the end of eighth grade, they're part of our community. And each one of them, they're either going to contribute to our community, or they're going to take from our community. And I am a firm believer that literacy is the key to all of that. Literacy provides people the opportunity to have a job, to read directions, to read a medicine label, to help their kids with homework. So, that's why we are doing what we're doing here. So, with Foundations, I'm going to share briefly why we needed to do it, then I'm going to talk about how I did it, how we did it, and then the best part I get to tell you about if it worked or not. Spoiler alert, it worked. Okay. So, sixth graders, I like to think of them as these little cute cupcakes, and they come to us from Denali, and they come to us from Hunter and U Park in Bud River, and they're these nice little baked cakes. And then, when we send them to class, we put all this grade-level content on them, we put all this frosting on top of that cake. And then, we have our Walk to Read program, which is like these cute little sprinkles, not something that's required, but boy, does it make it more fun and better and helps kids read. But the problem we were seeing is that there were some sixth graders with no foundational reading skills, and so, they have no cake. We have nowhere to put the frosting, because the cake isn't baked yet. So, my class is like the little cupcake baking class, where we're going to finish baking you so that you can do all the grade-level work that you need to do. So, some statistics that I like to talk about when we look at early intervention, so everything that Chain and Kate just talked about talks, you know, addresses early intervention in K3. And we know that kids that are having difficulties in reading, if they get that targeted intervention in first grade, 90% of them will reach grade level, and they'll stay there all the way through K12, 90% of them. But if we delay that help, 75% of those kids that have delayed help continue to have trouble all the way until graduation and are really at a risk of dropping out. If we wait past third grade, then it takes us so long to make the same kind of progress. It takes us four times as long to achieve the same results with the same skills if a kid is fourth grade or older. So, that's why all of that Alaska Reads stuff that you guys are learning about and we're all learning about, it's so important, because if that exists, then Foundations doesn't need to exist, and that's what we want, right? We don't want to have to fill in these gaps all the time. But our little cupcakes need us right now, because the sixth graders that just finished sixth grade, were in March of 2020. We all remember that wonderful month, right, where we went to spring break and never came back? Those guys were in second grade. And so, at the end of second grade, a lot of things are happening when we're teaching kids to read. In fact, this little graph, we see a lot, those of us that learn about teaching reading, if you look right about there, that's the end of second grade. Look at how many things kids are learning at the end of second grade, pretty much everything, except for Greek-derived morphemes, which they learn about in fifth and sixth, seventh grade. So, that is when our sixth graders this year went home, and some of them spent some of third grade not doing a lot of school-like things, because we all know that it depended greatly on whether you had someone at home to support you, whether you had a building to go to. So, there is a huge gap where these sixth graders were missing a lot of things. When we talk about reading itself, we hear this, I hear 80% accuracy a lot when we talk about setting reading goals for kids. And I want to show you a paragraph that has 80% of the words. And while I'm talking, you can kind of read it to yourself, and I want you to ask yourself, if I gave you this paragraph and then asked you to have a conversation with me about it... and then asked you to have a conversation with me about it, there's a lot that's not there. Twenty percent of those words mean a lot and actually make you understand what the paragraph is about. We think that we should require that kids have ninety-five to a hundred percent accuracy because the comprehension is what we're looking for, right? We want kids to get the words off the page. We want them to understand it. And the only way that sixth graders and seventh graders and eighth graders can interact with text is if they can get it off the page. So this is our goal, right? We want kids to be accurate when they're reading. Some background on what we used to think about reading, but now what we know. We used to think that kids in K three that were having a lot of problems reading, we would employ kind of a wait and see approach. So families are told, we'll just wait, I'm sure he'll catch up, we'll see what happens. But now we know that actually, the longer you wait, the gaps don't close, they actually get bigger. And so we have to intervene early and we have to do it with purpose. We used to also think that students needed to memorize large groups of words, sometimes in groups of one hundred. And you memorize what they look like and you do flashcards. But we know now that words really aren't stored in the brain that way. We look for patterns. And so drilling word lists isn't something that we really support anymore. We used to also think that parents, that kids would just learn to read if we read to them. Now, of course, reading to your child is not a bad thing, but just surrounding somebody in a text-rich environment doesn't make them read because learning to read is not natural. Learning to speak is natural, but learning to read is not. And we have to teach kids how to do it. And when we read aloud to children, it's beneficial, but it doesn't actually reach things like decoding, like bringing, taking words apart. We used to have spelling lists, of course. We'd group those spelling lists based on a theme or a text. And now we know that spelling lists are actually better if we group them by the rule. How, what do they have in common? Do they all have a silent E? Do they all have a long vowel? That's how we should group words when it comes to spelling. And lastly, we used to think that there were lots of different ways to teach kids to read. There's this whole toolbox. Well, we actually know now with brain science that children all learn to read the same way. They build pathways in their brain. They make connections between phonemes and graphemes and they map them. And once we get that done, then the sky's the limit. But we've got to take care of that part first. So in our school, just talking about Ryan, this is what we were seeing. And this is the first year that sixth graders were there. So not this school year, but the year prior. Sixth grade teachers were so frustrated because we had about half of our sixth graders that needed help even doing anything with grade level material. They needed a lot of support. We were seeing that low literacy was affecting assessments. So if a student failed a math test, was it because they didn't know the math? Or was it because they couldn't read the words in the word problem? Like, we didn't know. And so it was affecting all sorts of different ways that we measure learning. We also had students coming from elementary with inflated grades, where we had students that were reading at a second or first grade level. No one had any idea, not the teacher, not, well, probably the teacher did, but not the student, not the parents. And the grades we were seeing were not indicative of their mastery level. And then our science and social studies teachers were frustrated because they just were not getting to any content. And even the students that were reading at grade level had a hard time because they weren't getting the content either. Teachers were having to truncate and edit and take things out just so they could get something done. And so everyone was missing out on the things that we have to, we're supposed to be teaching our students. So we knew there was a problem and that's why we wanted to create Foundations. Okay, next slide. There we go. This is my little rudimentary graph of how we picked kids to be in Foundations. We can all assume that students are on a continuum of reading achievement by percentile from zero to a hundred. We can also assume that at some point along that line, students are getting service time, like you threw an IEP, they're getting extra services. But these are the kids that I wanted in Foundations. I wanted those students that were just at that line or just above it. And what they do all day long at school is they ride the struggle bubble. They ride it around. They go to, from class to class and everything's hard and everything's frustrating and I don't want to get on the bus. Those are the kids that I wanted in Foundations and we were able to find them. A great resource that I would love it if you went and did some reading on is a website called Children of the Code. And it does a lot of work and research with the issue of shame and teaching big kids to read. Teaching older students to read is highly emotional. It has so much emotional charge in it. Shame is deeply rooted in what we do, teaching big kids. Shame gets in the way of everything. And until we can break that down in the classroom, we get nowhere. It permeates everything. So you have to get students to get over that part, to feel vulnerable, to feel safe, to be able to do work in the classroom. We all know that there is a direct link between literacy and behavior. And if you don't know that, you will know it now because we had some incredible things happen this year with some of our behavior high flyers. But students that are getting referrals a lot, if you go deeper, you'll usually find that they're really low readers and they just don't want to go to class. So we see in middle school, a lot of avoidance behaviors. And what that looks like in a middle school is kids are skipping. Kids don't want to come to school, they're late for class, they want to get out of class, they want to go to the nurse, they want to go get water, they want to go to their locker, they want to go call their mom, and they want to go to the bathroom, of course. And then they do, there's a lot of disruption with, just within the classroom. So if I don't want to be here and I don't want to learn, I'm going to make sure nobody else does too. And we see this so much and a lot of people just sit around reading their hands about behavior. And I just sometimes want to stand up and say, have you thought about maybe making sure they can read? And so that's where we went this year. And we wanted to make sure that we took care of that. So the question we asked ourselves last year was, can we actually afford to do nothing? Because that's what we were doing was nothing. And we said no, so Foundations was born. We had to figure out who we were putting in these classes and we had to figure out what they were going to do in there. That was the hardest part, right? So we did an initial data review of all the sixth graders that were coming to Ryan. Our target were kids that were reading at K three level. And then we're talking general education students here. We had basically four data points. We had their spring eye ready from fifth grade diagnostic. We had their MAP growth report from fifth grade in spring. We had a fifth grade report card and we had, of course, our feeder school principals giving us input as well as their teachers. So we then created a list of kids from that. Then I went ahead and screened them further. So I use what's called the Core Phonics Survey, which takes a couple of minutes and it gives a great insight into whether students can decode words based on their pattern. I also administered the PAST, which is a phonological awareness screener, which I ask kids to take sounds out of words and say the new word or, or substitute a sound. And this is a great screener for figuring out whether kids can actually hear the sounds that are within the words that they speak. And this was a great screener to use as well. So we whittled out some more kids because, just because you get a low score on your eye ready doesn't mean you're a bad reader. Maybe you just hate taking those tests, right? So we, we screened some more out. Then I took the ones we had left, we were around forty-five at that point. And I did some benchmark testing and screening using Dibble's Eighth Edition. So I did an oral fluency test where they read aloud for a minute. And then I also did a maze, which is a test of comprehension where they choose a word that fits best in a sentence. So then I had my benchmark data. This is where these kids are starting. I have to know that because that's the only way I'll know if we were successful. So I have an unhealthy addiction to spreadsheets. So I put all this stuff into my spreadsheets. This is now all my benchmark data. These are where all my students are starting the year. And then we were off and running. So when you're in Foundations as a student, a real quick overview of what we do during the week. If, if anyone is trying to teach secondary reading intervention, you have to be extremely explicit. You have to be predictable. You have to have direct instruction. It has to be systematic, interleaved lessons, and it has to be diagnostic. You're always seeing where kids are every single week using progress monitoring. It is not random. It is not off the cuff. There's nothing about it that is random at all. It's very, very predictable. So I see my students four times a week. And there's lots of different components here. But the things that I'll touch on first, of course, is the basis of what I do is I started a second grade progression using Ufly. And so my students experience two lessons per week as sixth graders. We also had a couple of other components. We had decodable books, which I'll show you in a second. But the Ufly part is the middle of the week. That is kind of the baseline where I do all, we do all of our work. My classroom has a sound wall, so we break things up into vowel sounds and consonants. And we write, we put up on the board different graphemes that we study and which sounds that they correspond with because that's what we do. We correspond phonemes to graphemes and figure out which ones match. And then we also practice our heart words, which are our irregular words, which you should know how to spell by heart. Students in sixth grade are awesome because they can also track their own data. So we use a tool called Lexia Power Up for a little bit of time every week. And my students track their own data every week. They show what level that they're on, how many minutes and units they've completed. There are three different strands in Lexia Power Up, word study, grammar and comprehension. And students have the autonomy to choose, based on the goal that I give them for the week, which of those strands they want to work in. And Lexia will give them a weekly goal. It's a lot of time. We don't ever get even close to that time, but sorry, they, they have the ability to work on it anywhere. So if they wanted to practice their word study outside of school, they could, they could do that as well. I did a lot of modification with Ufly because my kids are twelve years old. So I did a modification of the lesson progression and I squished two days into one. And I did this just myself. And every single time you do a lesson, it's always exactly the same. So that's how I did my modification. There's a lot of preparation work involved. If you are going to teach Ufly with fidelity, my students have little toolboxes which contain all of their graphemes. They all have word mats. You can see I only have sixteen because that's the most children that I can possibly teach this to. My group has to be pretty small. But we use these every single day to build words and move graphemes around. And of course, I always have tons of extra because it's, you're going to start a lesson and somebody's going to be missing one. So you got to make sure you have plenty of extra. We do a lot of writing in Foundations. We do sentence dictation. I do everything on camera, so students are copying what I'm writing. And they really, really, really crave writing and they love doing handwriting. I think it's all the technology that they've done the last four or five years. They're kind of over it now. They want to be on paper. But when I get these back, I get all sorts of things back. But you can see that some people are down to write and some people are just having a bad day sometimes. But you can see in these papers, we first start out with an auditory drill where I say a sound and students write down graphemes that match that sound. Then we write down some words that match the lesson we're doing on that day. So this day, we're doing the ow sound, which is made using OU or OW. And then we practice some of our heart words, which you should know by heart. So we write these and students don't look at the board and then they copy, they write it and check to see if they're correct. And then we do some sentence dictation. And so I look at these every single class, they do a paper like this for me. And I use this as data, I use this for conferencing. It's great. My decodable books are a great part of my class. This is where I get to divide students into small groups where they can use a decodable book to read to each other and it matches kind of the general area of where we are in phonics progression. I also use this time to take kids aside if they missed a class or if I need to reinforce something that I think they're missing. I can bring them aside during decodable book time. This is super fun to watch. And if you ever come visit my class, just ask me what day we're doing this because this is the most fun to just walk around and listen to them. They read to each other. They also read chorally, like they read in one voice, which I think is one of the best ways to have kids read. And I just love, like, just walking around and listening to them. It's great. When we talk about reading, we usually talk about fluency. Fluency is extremely important. Fluency is the gateway to comprehension. So if students aren't fluent in reading, which is your rate, your prosody, your accuracy, if those three things aren't jiving, then kids can't get words off the page and they can't comprehend anything. And so we are always talking about fluency in my class. I've taken all the Ufly lessons. I'm a CSOW certified educator, which is like the highest tier of teacher that you can be in CSOW. And I've created lessons for each one of the Ufly lessons where students can record themselves reading. So now I have portfolios of all of my students reading every single week from August until a few weeks ago. And we've sat and listened to a lot of them and they're just amazing. There's just nowhere, way else to put it. You get to listen to one in a second, so. But what I do is I take the decodable from Ufly. I have students highlight based on what that lesson was about and then I have them record themselves reading it. After they're done, they get to choose to work on handwriting or they get to illustrate our decodable text or they can work on their computer. And about ninety percent of them always do handwriting. They love it. And so I think we should all take that and take it back to our classrooms and try to do more handwriting because they really do crave it. I check every week for understanding. I have kids write down some of the words that we studied. I check them on their heart words. I have them dictate some sentences. And you can see that I get all sorts of things back. This is a great comparison because the student on the right, she hardly ever misses a class. She's there every day, she's participating. You can tell she got a fifteen out of fifteen. She's doing really, really well. The student on the left, she usually misses one or two classes a week. So attendance is super important to everybody's success, but especially in Foundations because everything builds on itself. We progress monitor, of course. Like I said, I give them an oral reading fluency check every week with my person that helps me, which we'll talk about in a second. And I also have them do a maze every three weeks. And I use these numbers to just make sure that we're still on the up and up. And so here's the best part, we get to talk about if it worked. So yay. I know it's a lot of information. I want you guys to know, you can always reach out to me if you have questions or need more information about anything that I'm doing. And also, please come visit. I would love to have, most of you have already been in my classroom, but if you haven't, I would love to have you visit. So this is a student in Foundations who's going to read a passage for you and I'll play some of it. This is her in August of 2023 and hopefully this works.
Fran and Brad are in a band. "I quit," said Brad. Brad grabs his bag and slams it into the van. Fran can see Brad is mad. Fran and Brad get in the van.
Okay, I'm going to stop her there. One thing I want you to think about too, when you're listening is to kids this age, is you can hear a lot of sighing. You can hear a lot of, oh, Miss Curry, why are you making me read this, right? She read eighty-two words in forty-seven seconds. And you can kind of hear the, the stopping, the starting in her. We'll listen to one more sentence.
"You are mad," said Fran. Brad hits his bag. "Yes, I am mad," said Brad.
Said Brad. The other thing you should notice in that passage is those are all single-syllable words. All right? So this next passage is her reading in May. And this is another passage. There are all sorts of words in this passage, multi-syllabic. And this is the same student. And I want you to also listen to her prosody. So her prosody is her intonation and the way her sentences fit together. And this is what she sounds like now.
Chris is in the school chorus. The chorus is a group of students who sing together. Chris goes to chorus practice every day after school. At chorus practice, the students learn how to sing new songs. First, everyone listens to their teacher sing the song. Next, they hum the song. Then they whistle the tune. Finally, they all sing together.
So there's, hopefully you heard a difference. I hear the difference because I'm a teacher. But hopefully you heard that her intonation is better. She's sounding so confident. And I have an entire computer full of these recordings. And I don't think there is a better way to explain how awesome these kids are. But can I tell you, she did not like me at all until about February. We were not, I mean, she just could not get on board with, you know. And then all of a sudden, it just clicked one day and she just started reading, reading, reading. So it's, it's, it's a labor of love for sure.
Chris is in the school chorus.
Go to the next slide. Okay. So I snapshotted some eye ready. This is what the diagnostic looks like when you get student growth reports. So I just picked out six of them, but I guess it worked. I don't know, right? Most of my students, in order to get into my class, right? You had to be reading K one, two, three, somewhere in there. But I had students who went up amazing amounts of, of, of points during this year. So this is their eye ready diagnostic. So this is their iReady diagnostic taken three times. Here are some MAP growth scores. An average score for a sixth grader is about a 216. So I had a lot of kids go from the 170s to the 200s, just from fall to spring of sixth grade. So the data is undeniable and it also had a direct correlation to attendance. So there's more data there, obviously with, you know, if you're at school, you learn, then that's just how it happens, right? 28 of my 37 students exceeded their projected annual growth in their MAP and 17 of them actually doubled it and then a couple that actually tripled. But, and then 31 of 37 beat their language usage projected growth. So that's like grammar and sentences and things like that. And then on iReady, they have a yearly goal of 19 growth. That's like normal. 51 is called their stretch growth and I had 23 of my 37 beat the 19. Most of them got close to 51 or beat that. So the data obviously was showing that it worked. But one thing I must say is that data, as great as it is, it can be so deceiving. So I want to show you one student who took the spring map, got a 203, 204. At the, um, his benchmark data, he was reading 122 words correct per minute in the spring. When I first met him, it was 84. He got a maze score of three in the fall and he got a 23.5 in the spring, which is amazing for comprehension. But here's his iReady. He hates this test and it's just, that's it, right? So he does not want to take the iReady diagnostic and some kids like it, some kids don't. You know, some kids like all sorts of things and some kids don't. But the reason I show you this is because I always caution everybody to not just look at one thing, right? Try to get four or five ways to look at a student. And the best data you can ever get is to sit down at a table with them and listen to them read. So just make sure you're looking at all sorts of data points. So to wrap up, we have a couple of things we want to share as far as challenges. If a school or anybody would want to have success using something like foundations, the teacher, you know, anything you do with reading, it's usually 10% program and 90% person, right? Teaching older kids to read is highly emotional, a lot of shame involved. The teacher has to be compassionate, has to be skilled and has to be willing to support behavior management because I guarantee you're going to have students in there that need a lot of help with behavior. There's going to be staffing challenges because this teacher is going to need to have small classes. The teacher is going to need to have unique supplies. My students have headsets to record themselves, decodable books, costs a lot of money. So those specific supplies are super important and I just don't think the class could exist without them. And then the teacher needs time to manage data. So whether that's allowing them to use a, use a PLC time to go work on their data themselves or a PD day to go work independently, that's something that a building administrator like Heather does. Making sure that that teacher has time to do that because the data is the most important thing and it drives everything that I do. If a middle school wanted to target general education students with profound gaps in, in foundational reading, the teacher has to have a knowledge base. This isn't something you can just throw a teacher addition at somebody and say, good luck. The teacher should have at least completed Letters 3E, which is the classroom teacher version of letters. It takes about 10 months to do or Keys to Literacy would work as well. But that knowledge base is absolutely crucial. An aide or tutor is required because you have one day a week where you have to do progress monitoring and that isn't something a teacher can do alone. Remember what I said about the behavior thing, like these students have to have someone with them. You can't just be outside the door and be like, hey, guys, I write, you know, no. We need a tutor. We need a, an aide to do that. Class sections should have students on behavior management plans spread out. So they're not like all in one and that's a rostering. And then some students just need more than others. One does not equal one when it comes to students, right? And so we don't staff middle schools that way. You know, you have this many kids, you get this many teachers. But we don't talk about the fact that maybe 45 of those kids need more than one person. So that's just another thing to think about when we talk about PTR and things like that. Of course, there are things that are completely out of our control. Data is out of our control as a middle school. The data we get from our feeder schools sometimes is missing or maybe the student just moved here. Maybe it's not useful. Maybe it's not reflective of mastery. I think that's something that'll get better now that we have Alaska Reads, kids have RAP plans and Power School has a lot more information in it now. Chronic absenteeism, of course, something we're always dealing with. We can't control whether kids are at school, but what we can do is make it so that when they do come, they feel successful and they feel like they're empowered and that's our job and hopefully it's working. And then the last thing is student apathy. As a teacher, you cannot take it personally if kids don't like foundations. But some of them just don't see the value of it at first, but it does get better. But we have to make sure that the environment is consistent and kids feel safe enough to try. And that's how you're going to get some change. So the last thing we'll say is that foundations was a success. Yes, yes, okay. And foundations should not be a permanent tool because the benefits of Alaska Reads, this wave is going to hit middle schools in a couple of years. We're just not there yet. We have these students that really need our help right now. But no doubt, without a doubt, we absolutely changed the trajectory and the lives of several students and families in our community in Fairbanks. And I'm so happy that it worked and thank you for your support, for your support, for your support. And anyway, we're available for any questions. So thank you.
Dr. Minner.
Awesome. I don't usually jump in right away, but one, I wanted to say thank you to the dream team in front of us. Like I love every one of you and the presentation this evening was wonderful. Heather and Kelly, I'll start with you. I remember a couple of years ago when you were starting to think about Walk to Read and those big conversations of wondering if staff were going to buy into it and kind of all the nervousnesses around it. And so just really want to thank you and your staff for doing the work and leading the way in our middle schools. And the data shows like it's just amazing to see that path and the trajectory that you've walked. And so thank you for that. Allison, you're a master teacher. I rave about you across the district to middle school and high school principals. If they want their scores to improve, if they want students to have a strong foundation in reading, Ms. Gillum and I say, go to Allison's room. I've seen you in action multiple times this year and it's a pleasure every single time. Like I just love sitting down next to the students and seeing their growth and their engagement and your pacing is just like brilliant and spot on every time. And so, and then just wanted to say like what a joy it is to hear this report and the Reads Act report kind of finalize our regular school board meetings for the year. You know, there's tremendous growth across the district and that's because of the hard work each and every day from our students, our teachers and our parents and guardians that are supporting the work. So thank you.
Mr. Burgess, then Ms. Marotti, then Mr. Doran.
Just wanted to say thanks. Ms. Curry, your passion is absolutely inspiring and your, your work is incredible. Thank you to you and to everyone who supported you along the way. That goes for your school's administration and, and, and support as well as the district administration. This is really, really great presentation. I was riveted despite the late hour. So thank you for all the information and, and for, for changing the lives of these students.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Ms. Marotti.
Ditto. And also typically when we do a pilot program, if it's successful, which obviously, we get to continue it in some form or fashion. What's the, I know it says right here, it says it's not a permanent fix. However, until we see the impact of the Alaska Reads Act in middle school, can we keep it?
I think we can keep it and we are looking at other foundations and intervention type reading classes at the secondary level. That's something that Mr. Beams talked about in the past. And right now, Ms. Gillum and principals are working on how to fit that into the schedule. So yes, I would say we can keep it and the note on PTR noted. You know, in future years, I do hope in my proposed budget at least to start to target different areas. Because you're right, like students don't come in handy little bundles of 30 and we think they're all going to learn the same. So thank you for pointing that out.
Mr. Doran.
Thank you. I know you've been chomping at the bit, the three of you to say, yeah, when, when are we going to come before the board? When are we going to do this? And I'm glad you've been able to present elsewhere too. I think the things that strike me is the initiatives that you have taken as individuals and as a school. That makes us mindful, makes me mindful anyway, of the piece that our schools are different, our students are different. But it's a model of how we can pull upon our, the talents that are within our buildings to meet those needs of students. I love the, the piece of that, you know, the foundations should not be considered permanent. It may be long term for a while, but I firmly believe and I've seen where you start those early interventions and the payoff comes and that this is something that we've really needed at secondary and how to do it. And you've really presented well. You have helped our professional development. You have taught me tonight and I do thoroughly enjoy coming to your school, seeing you guys in action. So thank you for sharing this and the thoroughness of it. And the last thing I'll say is that I am really glad to the administration that we had this because I think when people are critical of public education, they need to see this. We need to get our story out and you have modeled that in your great examples of the, the job that is happening within our buildings, the effort to get there. And as you said, it's been several years in the making and small steps each point of the way. You didn't just sit there. You went and took action. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seen, I'm going to put myself in the final few. One, I am so glad that we finally, the board might not know, but they've been on the agenda a few times and then moved before it became final. And so, but persistence and they were the ones who brought it to us and said, we'd like to be on your agenda. So complete kudos goes to the dream team for making this happen. And I echo Mr. Burgess's comments that like absolutely riveted the entire time, even though it's nearly 11 o'clock at night. Yeah, Curry, your enthusiasm and passion is just infectious. And I can, like you sell out your classroom and I can tell why from teacher to teacher. I, I miss teaching a lot, but I don't think I've missed it quite as much as I have since watching you this. I would love to be on your team and teaching at Ryan alongside you all.
Well, I do need a sub on February.
They won't even let me sub.
Oh, no. Okay, never mind. Come visit anytime.
Here and I would love to work with some of your foundations.
Absolutely.
Those are my kind of kiddos.
Excellent.
I love that. Um, just thank you so much. And I remember you coming before our board and being like, all right, we're doing Alaska Reads, but what about the secondary kids? And you didn't drop it. You followed through every step of the way and it is such a clear demonstration of the excellence of our educators and just how passionate and that we, we are not, our public schools are not failing. We are underfunded, but man, are we doing the best we can with what we have. And thank you all and to the whole team at Ryan. I know you represent a much larger team behind you. Just bottom of my heart and I think the board shares those sentiments. You guys are moving mountains and making such a difference in students' lives. Thank you. Um, and that concludes that part and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And our last item on the agenda is board and superintendent comments. If there are any, we'll start possibly with Primo Alvarado. Nope. Ms. Maple.
Um, I won't take a lot of time, but the public testimony. No, I would like to ask that we work toward setting, and we can only do so much, but making sure that in our meetings, we remind the public, you know, at every meeting, I would ask that there's clapping and like, because that's not acceptable, that there is basic decorum that we expect of folks when they are here and testify before us. We create an incredibly open environment that welcomes any testimony. And I ran for this office knowing what I would face in this room and it's a big reason that I ran, but it's wearing on me. So I've been thinking about the way that we do our resolutions and I would like to visit that together as a board because our resolutions are something that we come back to and vote on every year. And I would love to find a way for a resolution that recognizes something like a month or a day that we find a way to pass that resolution and then honor it every year by, you know, reading it or bringing it back before the board, but not necessarily for a vote, not as an action item, not as something that welcomes hate. You know, I'm looking to what resolutions will come before us. Sorry, my voice is so shaky. What resolutions will come before us that I already know are coming and looking at specifically the LGBTQ history month resolution, it'll come before us in September, which is right before an election. And it's a time when everybody is amped up and the level of vitriol on non-agenda items is really hard to tolerate. And I would love to come up with some solutions, some changes to the way that we are practicing this to protect everyone. It's not just speaking for myself. I know that anybody listening and I know that my experience before being on this board, that it ends up feeling like your identity is what is actually being voted on, even though that's not the point, but that's what the testimony says. And I have no interest in not welcoming that testimony. Everybody gets to come here and say their piece and I get to say more of my piece. I get to talk for longer, given they're not here and don't have to look at me while I do it. But yeah, I would ask that we work together as a board to evaluate our current practice and perhaps come up with a path forward that protects everybody. Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Ms. Burnett.
I really want to thank you, Ms. Maple. Cause I wasn't going to really say much of anything, but I feel that something also needs to be said. I am absolutely appalled and tired of the alphabet people name being brought up in this room. And I think that it's time that this board and that this community come together and realize we're all people. We're all here for the purpose of education of our students. We are all here for a reason. Ms. Maple is an amazing human. I have gotten to know her over the last, what has it been, eight months now? Um, I have gotten to know her over the last, what has it been, eight months now? And it's amazing that ninety percent of everything we agree on. There is a small fraction of things that we don't see eye to eye on and yet we can still communicate. We still talk about it and we still work through it and we're still friends. And I'm proud to call you a friend, Ms. Maple. I really am. You are a very integral person and you belong here. And it is not okay, the consistent hate that is spewed. It has happened time and time again on this board to you, to Mr. Burgess, to Ms. Marotti, to Ms. Hardy, to Mr. Doran, to Ms. Anderson. It's happened to me. It's happened to everybody and it needs to stop. And the only way it stops is when we show a different face and show that we can be better. And if there's one thing that I can do, is I want that to be what I show. You know, I always say, "Be the change you wish to see in the world." And that is really important to me and that sticks with me. And that's why I take it upon myself to learn. And I think that the community could also learn if they just spoke with you. And I'm sorry that this is what you have to deal with, to you, Mr. Burgess, and Ms. Marotti as well. It's not okay. Hate is never okay. Um, on to my rest of my comments. Um, I wanted to address some emails. This actually goes along the lines of hate and um just wrong vitriol that comes to us as board members. Um, last week with the FNA vote, I know that that's a, a, a political thing, I guess. I don't know why people want it to be political. Um, but people have sent us emails saying that if we don't vote this way, then we hate this. Or if we do vote this way, we don't, i- it's, it's crazy that people want to come at you and say that if you don't support something, then you believe this or you are this. And that's not okay. And as you saw tonight, fellow board members who may not have felt one way last time, feel a different way this time. And that's what being on this board is about. We grow, we learn, we communicate, we talk to each other, and we come up with other solutions. We come up with other ideas. We come up with a different answer to where we are respecting and showing care for everybody in our community. Um, and I applaud this board for that. I really do. Um, it, tonight was spectacular and it makes me proud to sit here. It, it truly does. You know, when you tell us you're disappointed in us, that just says we're doing our job. When you tell us, "Good job," again, that tells us we're doing our job. We're, we're here doing a thing that we believe so deeply in. To have people come out and just be completely disrespectful and have a complete disregard for human emotion and, and just being human, it, it's just appalling to me and I would like it to stop. Yeah, I just think that we can do better with kindness and moving forward with some positivity and just showing some respect. And that's all I've got to say.
Mr. Burgess?
Thank you. I will echo the thoughts of my fellow board members that um, you know, I, I want to find a way to to protect marginalized community members who hear this um discrimination uh in our, in our boardroom from the, coming from the audience. On the subject of, you know, the, the, the books that uh folks are having trouble with, you know, I, I would encourage people to read the whole book before judging it. Context is important. I wanted to tell a story because I was actually talking, my, my daughter's in high school and I was talking with her about some book she was reading. I don't remember if they were even related to school or not, but I, I remember her saying that there were some difficult things to read in one of the books, uh, dealing with, you know, very adult issues, sexual assault, those sorts of things, violence. She said it's, you know, she said it was very difficult to read. And so, we asked her the question, "Well, do you think that these books shouldn't be in schools?" And she said, without hesitation, "Absolutely not." They, these are, this is important stuff. It's difficult to read about, but it's important. This is real-world stuff that happens. And so, I just, I wanted to make that note, like, you know, it's, it's, it's easy to find a book and pick out passages that seem controversial or too adult. Uh, I remember, but remember that, you know, our high school students are young adults. They're going to be adults soon. And the information that you can find in books helps you understand the world around you better, even if it is hard stuff to understand. Students who read, people who read, show that um, you know, score higher on empathy tests. They, they, reading can be an important part of developing that sense of empathy, that sense of self and where you belong in a community, the sense of how the world is around you. And I don't think there's anything wrong with that. And if, if parents do have a problem, as our superintendent pointed out, there are ways to prevent your students specifically from accessing books or other materials or even instruction. There are state statutes that allow you to opt out of just about anything. So, take your students' educations into your own hands. Don't tell me what my students are allowed to read and not allowed to read. On that, I just want to end on a couple positive notes. I am very excited about the um data that was presented to us, both regarding the Alaska Reads Act and the, the successful Foundations of Literacy um middle school pilot class. Really excited to see all of that work um and that success in that district. And I, I cannot emphasize enough how incredible our district staff are. Everyone involved, from the top to the, to, you know, the top of the chart, all the way down to, to the bottom. Every person involved in these efforts has done a whole lot of heavy lifting and it's paying off. And I'm really impressed with the, the work of this district and its educators. As we're going to pause our regular meetings until August, I just wanted to say um that this has been a great several months of my first term. I learned a lot. I'm still learning. And I really appreciate the support that our superintendent gives us as a board um to help us understand uh all the things that we need to know and, and your staff as well. So, um, and I'll, I'll, I'll end there, considering the late hour.
Mr. Doran?
I'm going to thank fellow board members for their comments and uh affirm that I absolutely support what you're saying. So, I won't repeat that, but I do think that there is another additional piece we've been talking about too. Under public testimony, there's a broad um opening. But it is also broadcast. And um, I think uh I have been, over the years, often enough times in, in the board as a whole, as noted at times, when we've had tough discussions, um, the general, um, and I have seen it develop here, sensitivity to each other, even from point of, different points of view. And uh, we've seen that happen in our, in these chambers. Sometimes different to what we've seen happen in other chambers uh within our own community and that we hear reported around the nation. But I hope people will be mindful, um, because the question goes in my mind, whatever we say is listened to not only by adults, but by students. And if we truly don't believe that students should not hear certain things, then we should model that. And I see our responsibilities as board members to model how we have, if you want, civil discourse and model that for our students. And within that, how much I appreciate the questions that um and ideas that are presented uh to teachers from students. And this is from the earliest age right on through high school graduation and into university and college and on the, in the workforce. But to be around a group of adults like our educators are, to help guide the conversation where students do build a relationship that they can ask a question. We can, they might read something, they might learn something, they might see something on TV, in life. And, you know, how do I deal with this? What do I think about it? Where do I go? Where do I do our decisions? And I think that guidance uh that our educators provide is often missed. And I'd rather have um our students, uh, my kids, my grandkids, be able to say, you know, ask the question and to do it in a safe environment. I think that's what we strive to do. So, and, and we do have processes uh that have been mentioned um to address concerns and to exercise options that are really important for students to have. Sometimes the student says, "Oh, I'm not comfortable with this and this is the reason. Can I do something else?" You know, thinking of dissections in a science lab. It goes across many things. I trust our kids and I trust that they're learning in the process. So, that said, um, I wanted to make note of the fact that uh election season is coming. We have seen the slate come out through state offices um and our local elections. The, their vacancies, their positions open um for the city councils, both North Pole and, and Fairbanks, for the assembly and for the school board. And the filing for that in the Borough Clerk's Office um for the borough will be um July fifteenth to the twenty-ninth. And uh, I hope that we will see a slate of candidates, uh, interest, willingness to serve um in our community. And I just want to note again, when we talk about uh success of our schools, how impressive it has been over the years to watch our graduates, the number who have run for office and as well as um really committed um uh community members uh who want the best for kids. So, just want to keep that in mind uh as you, over the next month or so of summer, but to think about um ways in which you can serve. And I do want to say thank you for all of those uh who have served and continue to serve in our communities locally and at the state level to run for office. That's my comments.
Ms. Marotti?
Well, I wasn't going to say anything, but um I do want to thank uh Ms. Maple and my fellow board members for your vulnerability and your grace, um, for your desire to do better and expect better. Someone uh tonight called us woke. And if woke means that we don't tolerate hate, then in our community, then I'm woke up. And I'll continue to be until the hate stops. So, um, I support Ms. Maple's request to explore uh ways to reduce the harm um that's currently being allowed due to our past practices. Um, and um, I appreciate the board's um collective wokeness. And I hope we can do something finally about it. Um, and thank you again, Colonel Alvarado, for your service to us, to the community, to the, to the country. Um, and uh, I'm not going to say goodbye.
I'll be very brief. Um, I just want to thank this board. I feel like tonight's meeting was an example of just what good choices our community made in electing each and every one of us. And the growth that I have seen every one of us go through on our terms is monumental and just shows that it is okay to be human, it is okay to learn and grow and that that is what we should be shooting for. And it is, you cannot hold an elected official to an impossible standard. It, it's not possible. We're going to all make mistakes. We're all going to grow. We're all going to hopefully be, become better people through this service, kind of like a crucible. And I just so appreciate and it is an honor to serve with each and every one of you. And Colonel Alvarado, you will be so dearly missed on this board, but we are very excited to welcome um the next Colonel. And uh, we, we hope you, you still grace us with your presence some, some future board meetings, but you can leave before nearly midnight. Uh, with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
We are adjourned.